All right, the hour is 6:30 has arrived, so I'd like to start this business meeting of Urbana School District 116. A roll call please.
Here, Member Hassanaka, Member Langendorf here, Member Baxley.
Here.
Member Jones. Vice President Exum.
Here.
President Palowski.
Here, we do have a quorum. There will be one modification to tonight's agenda. We're gonna move accommodations and recognitions until immediately following the student ambassador report. Because they went to the wrong building and they're on route. Next up, our citizen statements. So if anybody would like to make a statement before the board, please fill out a golden round sheet in the back of the room and hand it to our recording secretary Lori Johnson. First up is Florence Matthew.
Good evening, board members.
Yeah, thanks.
Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, I'd like to make a short statement about the French dual language program. I've been teaching in the French program since 2017, so I was there when it was moved from King Elementary to Yankee Ridge Elementary. Last year, we went from six separate classrooms down to five by combining the third and fourth grade. This year, we went down to four classrooms by combining third and fourth grade and also first and second grade, which I teach. For next year, our administration is proposing that we go down to three classrooms by combining kindergarten with first grade, second with third grade, and fourth with fifth grade. While I understand that due to our low enrollment numbers, it's more fiscally responsible to combine classrooms, our current kindergarten teacher and I believe that kindergarten and first grade should not be combined into one classroom. This year, it is my first year teaching a split classroom of first and second graders. It was very hard at first, but we figured out how to make do. However, kindergartners and first graders are very different from a developmental standpoint. It takes about three months to get kindergartners used to being in school full days. They spend the first semester learning their alphabet and letter sounds. For half the class that has never heard a word of French before, that first semester is also spent learning that hearing a teacher talking to them in a language, another language than their own, is nothing to be afraid of. First graders start the school year being already used to full days of school, knowing how to read short words in English and in French, and speaking simple sentences in French. It would set their learning quite back to combine them with a kindergarten class. I believe we must do everything we can to keep the kindergarten and first grade class as two separate classes. Currently, there are nine French-speaking students at Urbana Early Childhood eligible for the program, and there could be more French-speaking families registering for kindergarten closer to next year. So there is a possibility that we could have a full kindergarten class. This must be taken into consideration when you plan which school building you'll move us next year, if we need to move. The French dual language program would need at least four classrooms if our enrollment numbers don't change. But hopefully, we can grow the program back, and then we would need six classrooms, one for each grade. This brings me to the second point I wanted to make tonight, which is the location of the French program. To my knowledge, the board has not yet discussed where the program would be housed next year. It was voted that the Spanish program would be housed in one school, and under three options are Dr. Williams, Thomas Spain, or Yankee Ridge. After much consideration and speaking with our French dual language parents, I believe that it would be in our interest to stay at Yankee Ridge and to keep our French program separate from the Spanish program. My first reason for this statement is that when the program moved from King to Yankee Ridge in 2018, some French-speaking families chose to stay at King, so we lost students in that move. We cannot afford to lose any more French-speaking students if we want the program to continue and hopefully grow. My second reason is that several of our English-speaking families who live in the Yankee Ridge neighborhood said they would pull their students out of the program if the program moved away, because they want their kids to attend the school closest to their house. Again, as with the French-speaking families, we cannot afford to lose any more students if we want to keep the program going. While from an administrative standpoint, it would be beneficial for French dual language staff to be able to collaborate with the Spanish dual language staff and have professional development together, we can continue to do so after school if we're housed in separate buildings in the future, as we're doing now. My third reason for keeping a French program in a separate building from the Spanish program comes from two of my students' parents. Urbana has seen a growing number of immigrants from Spanish-speaking countries, so the Spanish program will soon need additional space to accommodate this population growth. If we were housed in the same building, the French program might have to be moved again in a few years to accommodate for more Spanish classrooms. My fourth reason is that even though French-speaking immigrants and Spanish-speaking immigrants find common ground in faith, family values, and home education, these two populations are very different, speak different languages, and have different needs. We still need a French-speaking school secretary, and a French-speaking family liaison next year, but I'm afraid they would be replaced with Spanish-speaking staff due to our low enrollment numbers in the French program. Our families who don't speak English need to be able to communicate with staff in the front office, which is the case now, but may not be the case if we move in with the Spanish dual language program. In closing, I have personally built relationships with many teachers at Yankee Ridge, and our French dual language students have also made friends at Yankee Ridge that they don't wish to leave behind. I hope that our administration and the board will take these reasons into consideration while deciding which program will be housed in which building. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. This is the only request we receive, so I'm gonna make one last call. Would anybody else like to make a statement before the board? If so, please fill out a golden round sheet and hand it to Lori Johnson. Going once, going twice? All right, thank you. That concludes our citizen statements for the evening. There is no call for an executive session this evening after tonight's meeting, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move for approval as amended.
Second.
Should move seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post? So next up is our student ambassador's report.
This is a student ambassador report from me and Dominica. The word of the day is mix or mox. You can really pronounce it either way. What it means is it's a gender-neutral word that has the same meaning as the word miss, misses, and mister, except the title mix is a gender-neutral title that gender non-conforming individuals often use, but not always. What is gender non-conforming? Gender non-conforming in the queer community means someone who does not identify as cisgender, as a cisgender male or a cisgender female. Cisgender is someone who identifies as the gender they were assigned at birth. The title's important. Mix is important to use if requested to use, because using this title shows that you are showing this person respect and acknowledging who they are. Everyone is different and identifies in multiple different ways. Internships. The juniors at the Urbana High School have the ability to apply for the executive internship program. There will be an informational meeting tomorrow during sixth hour in the lecture hall about this. Seniors are doing these internships this year, so good luck to all the seniors who are participating this year. Urbana High School sport events. Today, there's girls' basketball, and then there's a swim meet, there was a swim meet at 4:00 PM. And then tomorrow is wrestling at 6:00. January 25th is another girls' basketball game. January 26th is the boys' basketball game, and then January 27th, there's a boys' basketball game, a swim invite for the boys, and then a cheer competition, and then JV boys' wrestling. Martin Luther King Day was recent, and so here are some of his accomplishments to celebrate him. First is peaceful protests. Martin Luther King Jr. led many peaceful protests and got a lot of backlash for it. He was sent to jail sometimes for it, but that never stopped him, and he continued to revolutionize civil rights through peace and talking through inspiration from other leaders of non-violence. The SCLC is what he founded, and that stands for the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. And this encouraged black individuals to involve themselves in more peaceful protests and to unite citizens working for the civil rights movement. And the goal of this was to make sit-ins and protests more successful and impactful while still being non-violent. And the Montgomery Bus Boycott was a mass protest that lasted 13 months, ultimately ending the segregation of black civilians on buses. Martin Luther King Jr. became very active in this boycott and deeply encouraged it in others, and he became an even stronger civil rights leader through his work with helping influencing this boycott. Urbana High School water and bathrooms. I gave you a bathroom update like, oh, I think maybe a month ago or two, and the bathrooms seem to be doing a lot better, but recently, my psychology teacher asked how people thought about the bathrooms, and everyone in my class was just like, "They're good, but like, the smell is still like, pretty bad." And then, I was wondering, are there more of like those strips that you guys like nailed into the bathroom stalls? Like, did you guys nail more of those into the stalls?
Yeah, there's only one bathroom, one set of bathrooms that don't have those, and that's in the MP hallway.
So there's only like one bathroom that doesn't have the strips?
One set of them, I think, boys and girls in those I don't have them. I just talked to Dan earlier today, that's what he told me.
So like, most of the bathrooms have the like privacy strips? Okay, that's good. And then for the water fountains, most of the water fountains at the Urbana High School don't work. Normally, like, only the place to fill up your water bottle works, and sometimes those don't even work. Or like, some water fountains don't even have those, and they just don't work at all. This means many students have to walk long distances for water. Like, I've had to go from the first floor to the second floor, walk to what feels like the other side of the school, which like hurts learning time. So like, is there any way we can try to fix this?
I talked to Dan just a few minutes ago, and he said there's only one in the building that's not working, a bottle filler. And then he said there was also one in the art hallway that we had to call the DNS sewer service in to clean out the drains, because it was full of noodles and stuff where people washed out their lunch containers.
Oh, okay, so for the ones that don't work, where you can like push the button and the water comes out?
Dan said they were all working, like I said, I was talking a little bit ago, but we're gonna check them.
Really? Okay, because normally when I leave my classroom, I like push it a thousand times, it just does not work, so I don't know.
Which one?
Most of them, everyone I normally use, I have to walk to find another one, it's so strange. And some of them, there's like not even a head for water to come out of it. And like, my friends were saying like, "Oh, they're supposed to put a head on that water fountain for water to come out." That one is by, on the first floor, by door one, and then the women and men's bathroom. It's by the lunchroom, like it's the lunchroom water fountain.
Is that the one that was full of noodles?
Uh, that was the one that doesn't even have a head for water to come out of it, so maybe, yeah.
We'll take a look at them.
Um, thank you. The band fundraiser is on January 24th at the Biaggi's Restaurant for their second annual trivia fundraiser to support the Urbana High School band program. So that would be fun if you guys could come join us for that. The MLK Scholarship seniors, Hudson Cody, Kate, ooh, I might not pronounce all these names right, but Hale Big, Norcine Ismail, and Lorelei Yo, or, yeah, I think, yeah? Okay, are congratulated on their receiving of Martin Luther King Jr. Living the Dream Scholarship. Thank you guys for how well you represent the students at UHS. The strawberry sale for FFA. So FFA has an annual strawberry sale, and if you would like strawberries, you could speak with Ms. Jack in room 1196. You can get a quart for $4, half flat for $15, or a full flat for $28. Cash or checks are made payable to the Urbana High School FFA and are accepted for payments during the sales period, which runs from January 8th to February 22nd. Delivery is scheduled to occur between February 16th and February 23rd. Yeah, so if you want to support FFA, you could buy some strawberries. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paulina. Next up are accommodations and recognitions. So we're pleased to have students from our, sorry, the following students were selected to participate in the Illinois Music Education Association's All-State Conference. So we have several of them here today. This conference will be held in Peoria, January 25th to 27th. Yeah, this, yeah.
You wanna do this for students, or say anything, or? It's okay.
It's all right.
Yeah, we're gonna read their names. I didn't know if you had something you wanted to say in addition.
All right.
Want me to read them, or?
Sure.
Okay, I will start with chorus. I didn't see Darren. I would love to recognize teachers if they're here. I see, okay, so just Ms. Park, all right. I didn't want to miss any staff members. So for chorus, alto two, Veebechtel. Tenor two, Jaden Burgess. Woo, Jaden! And bass two, John Lee. Yay! Congratulations to our chorus students. Orchestra, I don't see Ms. Gingold, so I will, go ahead, trumpet, Samantha Sammy Christman. Yay! English horn, Ail Lee. Yay! And tuba, Theodore Nevins. Congratulations! And then band. Contra alto, clarinet, Ian Peters. I see Ian, nope. Congratulations to Ian. And then future education seminar, Declan O'Connor. Yay, congrats to Declan. And did we miss anybody? I feel like there's lots of parents here, so how about we have all of our students stand, and we'll give you guys a big, it would be great if we could have them come up in the front and take picture. You wanna have, you guys wanna come line up here in the front, and then the audience can see you too, and we can do just a group photo, just move like.
Yeah, you get up close so the cameras can get you.
Yep, 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 right in here in front of us, Jaden, you can start the line. Yeah, yeah, Sammy, leave it on, you're representing.
All right, so we have four administrative reports tonight, quite lengthy. First up tonight is an analysis on our Urbana enrollment from our representatives from RSP and Associates.
Hi, thank you, board. I think I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen so that I can pull up the report and walk through our findings from the 2324 enrollment analysis.
And I'm gonna introduce you while you're doing that, sorry, I was still getting situated. So Rob is traveling, I forget what state he's in today, maybe Tennessee, I can't remember. But this is Jenna, and she's been working, kind of leading our work. So we meet with Jenna often and communicate via email, and so she's been fantastic. So she's kind of stepping in for Rob tonight. But she's been very involved in putting together this analysis, and so she's gonna lead us through and then take questions at the end. So thank you, Jenna.
Yes, thank you. Just like the superintendent said, so my name is Jenna Wallace with RSP. I'm a planner here with Rob, so we often split our meetings just between our presentations. Rob is in Iowa, that's the state he's in tonight. So I'm here to walk through our enrollment analysis. We're gonna keep this pretty brief, as far as I want to keep the initial conversation fairly high level. We are talking through this kind of first step of digging into our enrollment data, which starts at that enrollment analysis. So reviewing this sort of enrollment and demographic and housing development indicators that lead into enrollment projections is what I want to talk through tonight. And then at the end of the presentation, I'll take any questions. If I can answer them, I for sure will, but if there's anything that I need to get with my team for to make sure that's the correct answer, I'll just note your questions, and we will follow up with those appropriate answers. All right, so the report before you, it's pretty lengthy, so like I said, I'm gonna try to keep this high level, try to keep more to our signature slides that are the more important indicators when leading into our enrollment projections. We will walk through our Part One, Enrollment and Demographics, Part Two, which is our Housing and Development, and leading into the main part of this report, which is our enrollment projections by building and by grade level. So our first slide here, Hundred Thousand Foot Perspective, sort of an overview of where this report has the district going these next five years. We do have the district growing in enrollment up until 2829, and the majority of that enrollment growth is at the middle school level. And we'll talk through capacity challenges and what the difference it means for students by reside versus students by attendance. And then I'll briefly talk through our residential and economic growth, as that is a main driver and indicator of our future enrollment trends that we will kind of map out through this report. So there's lots of maps in the report. First visual here is our district boundary with our different school sites, indicated with the school points. We did zoom in, so you can kind of see where the main map is zoomed into the city, but in the bottom left corner is the full district boundary. This visual here is our elementary boundary map, which leads us into our RSP planning area. So this is one of the initial building blocks that lead into the RSP forecasting model, a planning area. If you follow one green line, it's indicating one individual planning area that our analysts have created using census data, attendance areas, natural boundaries, if it's a multifamily or a single-family, neighborhood complex, to create all these different building blocks that are all uniquely analyzed by our statisticians to create our enrollment projections. So knowing that everything that I'll show throughout this report and leading into the projections comes back down to this level, where each individual neighborhood and subdivision was analyzed for that relationship with future students, so where they're at with a subdivision lifecycle, are they yielding more students or less students, really just kind of boosting the accuracy of the model and the granularity that we can get using this methodology. So everything at that planning area level will go into the forecasting model here. So really, this slide is just to say that this is statistics, so we're taking all of the known data and utilizing our model to see what that likelihood of enrollment is for these next five years. So one of our key signature slides here, we start out by analyzing the birth rate data for the county. So this is looking at Champaign County, the past, I think around 15 years of live birth data, and then the relationship of a kindergarten class coming in compared to five years prior's live births. and then the relationship of a kindergarten class coming in compared to five years prior live births. So in this case, we have been seeing less live births per year. This is pretty consistent with our national in-state trend, so nothing that's surprising here per se, but definitely a demographic trend. We want to keep watching year to year. You can see here that back in like twenty-fifteen, we were at twenty-four hundred births per year, and the latest data, twenty-twenty-one, we're right around two thousand births. So a four-hundred student decrease in that six-year span there. All this saying that with lower live births, it takes more of a market share to continue to see that same kindergarten class. So coming forward, looking at a enrollment share of our live births of around fifteen percent is something that we would want to be continually targeting to continue to see our kindergarten classes above that three-twenty-five to three-fifty number. Just one of the indicators that we're using to analyze our kindergarten projection. Next slide is our past enrollment by grade, so looking at our different grade level trends between the years. The district did see an increase for the last twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three year with a more of a stable enrollment gain this past year. Some of these main takeaways are the difference of where our small classes are versus our larger classes. So our eleventh and twelfth grade, right here, if you can follow my cursor, add up being around two-hundred-and-fifty students, being the lowest enrolled grades in the district. Versus, we have some of our larger grades in our upper elementary cohorts. So as those upper elementary students move into the middle school, likely to see that middle school increase. Additionally, as our smallest classes in our eleventh and twelfth grade exit the system in the next two years, there's that gradual district-wide increase that we're likely to see. Next, we focus in on our cohort change, so this is analyzing the student movement between grades year to year. So this tendency that we do see of a cohort loss from our ninth to twelfth grade, pretty consistent with other school districts where we do tend to see grade levels decrease year to year. So we do have that trend kind of factored in. You guys definitely see one of your strongest cohort boosts from eighth to ninth grade. So looking at this column here, you can see that on a three-year average, there's an increase of around eighty-four students transferring in from eighth to ninth grade. So students coming in from, maybe originally coming into that ninth-grade high school experience at your district. The rest of the cohorts tend to seem fairly stable between our cohort growth, so any movement between the grades is regularly replaced by student totals. The next two slides here look at our migration trends. So looking at the new students per year coming into each grade level, so we can see that's the orange bars, the number of new students. Versus, the green was a past student in the district that has transferred private percolate out of state, some, any of those categories in our outmigration, the green bars. So illustrating that the past two years, you as a district have seen more of that in-migration, out-migration. But this year, with a lower percent growth in the district, we did see more of that outmigration of students than in-migration. That net positive, or that net negative here. We wanted to provide this by a whole number to kind of compare total number of students, but then also by a percent to reflect that in the middle school, we have less total grades, so less total students. So illustrating that if we look at this on a percentage perspective, our high school seems to have the lowest in-migration. While our outmigration, you can see it has increased on that percentage level. This next slide here is our out-of-district enrollment, so looking at the number of students that reside from out of the district boundary. The district sees around fifty students from surrounding districts, with Champaign community being the largest contributor of out-of-district enrollment. This visual here looks at our subdivision lifecycle of our neighborhoods. So where you see orange is where in those neighborhoods, the past five years have increased in student count. Versus, the green is where we have seen a decreasing number of students in those neighborhoods. And then we have a student density heat map here, so looking at all of our students in the district and a relationship of proximity, so the closer students reside together, we can see how that creates this heat effect. And very clear where kind of your four pockets of hottest student density is residing in the district. So all of those slides there kind of build the building or footprint for our enrollment demographics, so looking at all our different indicators, some of positive, some of negative of our student loss and student growth. What I'll lead into now is our outlook on development and the relationship between the housing market and future students. This first visual here is utilizing census data and county data and trying to pinpoint the relationship between these really important indicators. So our green line, year to year, is our population change. So from the census, the district has been seeing population loss year to year from thirteen, fourteen to twenty-twenty-one. We often seen a big swing between decennial census moments as the census kind of right sets themselves. So more of a population loss to a very small population gain trend in your community. This green line that's more stable and positive is our new certificates of occupancy, so leading as there's been a stable increase of around kind of fifty to seventy-five new units per year being built on this decade time period. And then the red line indicates our student enrollment change. So knowing that we had our kind of three years of enrollment loss from eighteen, nineteen to twenty-twenty-one, and our last two years of enrollment growth as we've recovered from that. So indicating three really important indicators here, as we want to watch what our total population is in the district and then continuing to watch what our building activity is, if anything drastically changes with these two indicators of what that could look like for our enrollment. This visual here goes into just a demographic summary from the census data, so kind of indicating, going alongside with that bar graph where we have had some population loss in the district. Housing inventory has increased these past couple of years as more units have come online. And then we've also been reviewing the income outlook and our workforce outlook as some more of our demographic trends in the community. The visuals here on page twenty-three is our yield rate analysis. So this is pinpointing the relationship between housing units and students in the district, and then we provide this for the past ten years. So the top table is looking at the number of students the district sees per one hundred single-family units. So the district sees around eleven students per one hundred single-family units. And then by boundary, Dr. Williams Elementary School, that boundary has the highest student yield rate. And if we look back to comparing the student density heat map versus where that enrollment boundary map is, you can really see how a lot of the areas with the hottest student density reside in Dr. Williams Elementary Boundary. We also provide this by multifamily, so this is including the apartments, townhomes, mobile home parks, everything that falls outside of this single-family designation. For this case, the district sees around ten students per one hundred multifamily homes. So a very close relationship between your single-family and multifamily yield rates. In this case also, Dr. Williams tends to have the highest yield rate in the district. And then second, that would be Yankee Ridge for the multifamily yield rate. A couple of quick visuals here that just go through the housing market in the district. So looking here where the average year built, based on those planning areas where red would be the newest subdivisions being built. And then the median home value, so trying to illustrate where in your geography is the more affordable units and the ones that are newer to the district. So in this case, the orange, dark orange, is the least affordable, and then the blue would be the most affordable. And then we wanted to pull this up to kind of flip through to show that where these pockets of hottest student density tend to be in the areas that are more affordable. So kind of looking at that density of students in this pocket here, and then up here compared to where our current students live. So just that relationship with affordability of our housing market has a very strong propensity with having students in the district. And then lastly, we provide this recent year-built map, so just looking at the past five years of data, where have the new units been located in the district? So definitely a bundle down in your southeast, as well as more on the north side, providing that outlook of future residential. This visual here is just a different perspective of looking at our building activity. So looking at decade by decade, where the new units have fallen between each year. So orange being that they were new to that decade being built versus gray was the existing number of units at the start of the decade. So showing here that really in the fifties to the eighties is where the district, where you guys saw the most of your housing inventory being built, creating, when we looked at that average year built, how a lot of the majority of units was in that sixties to eighties age bracket. So at that point, we pivoted into, that's the relationship of existing housing. What is our outlook for potential future housing in the district? Where new units come online is where we tend to see new students coming into the district. So really trying to dive deep into that relationship. This visual here illustrates that, so the green areas are where we have current active development. And then the yellow is a potential development on a five-year timeline, and then purple is a potential on a ten-year timeline. So these different areas came from our analysts reviewing planning commission notes and talking with developers, as well as just meeting with the city to kind of map out where current projects or maybe potential projects could happen in the district. So just know that all these areas are just kind of potential on the horizon. Building activity does tend to swing with the market and with the different relationship between building and infrastructure. So this is just kind of our outlook as far as this winter of what potential development could look like in the district. We break all those areas from the map into this table here that provides our potential units. So looking at around eleven hundred potential units to be added to the district, with two hundred in current development stages. So that reflects this outlook of our development in our housing, which all leads into, so between that and our enrollment demographic portion, we lead into our projections. Alright, so first visual here of where the twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment analysis has your district going is an increase of students by about a hundred-and-fifty students over these next five years, totaling four-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-five in twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So most of that increase is at the middle school level, as I talked about in the beginning of the slides of where our larger grades are at. So our second, third, and fourth grade, as they move up into the middle school, creating a very natural middle school grade increase of about a hundred-and-thirty students over these next five years. So coming to over a thousand students in our middle school. So right now, we're showing just that total of sixth through eighth, but we will break that out between our buildings in the next slide. At our elementary and our high school level, a very natural, more of a stable enrollment of about twelve students increase at both levels. So you'll see, if you like kind of look at one part of the bar on each of these, where some years, there's a small decrease, versus others, there's that increase. So very, more of a stable enrollment at our elementary and our high school. But overall, the district's growth of about a hundred-and-fifty students. So I'm gonna explain most of this slide when I get to it. What we wanted to provide is the outlook of our building projections by our attend and reside. So to illustrate what I mean by attend versus reside, I have this table, which is our twenty-three, twenty-four student data for this year of the relationship of where students currently reside versus where they actually attend. So kind of reading this left or right, this would illustrate that in King Elementary, you have sixty-six students that reside in that boundary but attend one of the other elementary schools. And this can lead from where our programs are at, where we have a relationship with some overflow between our boundaries, just illustrating that. Not every student that resides in their boundary attends that school. There's a difference of about six hundred students that move intra-district between our different elementary students. So we want to make sure our projections can align to that. So when we look at these next couple of slides, which is our projections by grade, there's a lot of information here. So first thing, there's, in our past student data, what we're gonna show is our reside, which is the middle row, green font, so the number of students that physically reside in that boundary. Our blue bottom row is our attend, so how many students actually attended that building each year. And then the top row, purple font, is our reside slash attend. So it's a subset of reside of how many students physically reside and attend that building. So this tries to capture those trends that that previous table of the intra-district transfers really pulled out for this current year. So saying that we know how many students reside in each boundary, but then based on all the different kind of uniqueness between your buildings, the number of students that are actually projected to attend each building is that blue font. The other benefit of providing it this way is depending on maybe the purpose of looking at the projections or looking at this for planning perspectives, you want to use a different number. When we move into any potential boundary conversation of our different neighborhoods, we want to look at that reside number, as we're saying here, for example, at Dr. Williams. If all the students in that boundary attend that school, looking at five-hundred-and-sixty up to six-hundred-and-forty students from that boundary. Versus, with our student movement in and out of the district, we come, we bring that number down to around that four-eighty mark. And so looking for the, from the perspective of maybe enrollment planning or looking at staffing per building, it would be that attend number that would be the most accurate projection for each building. So that goes into kind of explaining our reside and attend projections. Also on this slide, we provide our max capacity and functional capacity. So this was provided by the district as what we want to utilize for our different enrollment planning. And then our shading here indicates the utilization of the functional capacity. So if the orange indicates when that projection is over a hundred percent of the functional capacity, and then green is indicating it's under seventy percent of the functional capacity. So the functional capacity is that target the district provided. So looking here, over these next five years, if everything stays the same with our programming and our boundaries, we would see potentially Liel at an over functional capacity mark. And then by reside, Thomas Payne and Dr. Williams as well. So we also provide the same graphic for our secondary boundaries. In this case, we do not have any over functional capacity provided for our secondary. In this case, we do not have any over functional capacity provided for our secondary facilities. This top row you can see as our Flossy Wiley School and the transition opening, reopening in twenty-five, twenty-six as a sixth grade center. Really pulls our middle school down in their enrollment, starting twenty-five, twenty-six. So if we think about that building and the enrollment growth that we are projecting at our middle school. Really a proactive move of moving towards that sixth grade center to relieve our middle school capacity. Instead of that nine hundred mark, bringing that down to around six hundred students in our middle school for our seventh and eighth grade. Our high school with fairly stable enrollment isn't seeing a over one hundred percent or under seventy percent. So a very good utilization of our high school space over these next five years. So that goes into the summary of what we're putting together for this enrollment forecast. We have a very stable enrollment at our elementary and high school with the majority of the increase at our middle school. Some of our capacity challenges reside in our elementary school. So Liel by attend. Dr. Williams by reside and Thomas Payne by reside and attend over these next five years. And some of those driving forces really coming from our recent enrollment growth in our larger classes moving in. With our smallest classes exiting the system, as well as our outlook of community migration and our development. So that goes through most of my report here. The rest of this is more just our key considerations and next steps. So just going forward with, this is our likelihood of our forecast at this time. And we know that a lot of this information is going to be used with the next steps of our boundary conversation. So I want to make sure that I left enough time for you guys to ask any questions. And if there's any slides I can better explain or go back to. I just want to make sure you guys have a comfortable feel with this report and with our enrollment projections. So I'll go ahead and pause for any questions that you guys have.
Board members, are there any questions? I guess I have, go ahead.
Hi, Sitali here. I'm curious about where do you, where the numbers for the immigrants that are coming to the area are coming from? And when was the time that you guys took that data?
Um, as far as our student data?
Yeah, when you have a slide where the immigrants come and the immigrants were coming to the area. I wonder how you guys got that number and when was taken that data?
Yeah, so all of our student data is going to be reflective of official count. So whatever you guys send to the state of the Illinois Official Count Day. And then the migration slides, that's just looking at new students coming into the district that can come from anywhere. We don't know where they come from. It's more just a new student ID that year versus the outmigration was we had a student ID for you in the previous year. And then this year it transferred out. So really, everything's coming down to that official count day. As like the marker of all of our student data.
If you're talking about the immigration, outmigration slide, I think that's, that's district immigration and outmigration. Not necessarily, so that's students who have entered the district from the previous year. Who maybe came from Champaign or Rantoul or outside of the state. And then outmigration is students who left the district.
I understand that, but I just wondered how she took that data. How do we know what is kind of the prediction of how many people is coming? Because where I work, I can see how many people is coming. And that information wasn't really the one I'm seeing in my job. So I wonder where that information came from and when was taken.
Yeah, so all of that's from the student data, from, and then from our official counting data.
And I can give a little more. So every time there's a student who comes or leaves the district every year. There's an entry withdrawal code that's put into the student database. And based on whatever information we have, we can code those entry withdrawal codes to where they came from or where they went. So over the course of a year, if we have like, I think for elementary, it was like three hundred students or a hundred and fifty students came and a hundred and fifty students left throughout the year. That's all in the entry withdrawal fields in the student information system.
I don't think that that's what we're trying to get to, what Sitali is asking. We decided our last meeting about combining and having one dual-language program. And one of our goals would be to determine where that dual-language program would go. And I think Sitali wanted to, wanted to find out where the students who might qualify for the dual-language Spanish program, where they're living in the community. And is that information that we can get?
Yes, that's what I want to know. Because in my job, I have different numbers. We see more people coming to the area every day. And I want to know how she predicted, how many students coming. I keep saying that. Yeah, that's what I want to know.
All of the data here is pretty much straight out of Skyward.
This is all actual data versus what she's wanting to know is your projection of who's going to be coming. So where, if there's data like that, where is that data coming from of the projections of those that are gonna show?
Those were, I think, the past three actual, but there were some projected numbers. Maybe you could talk to Gina.
So like the in and out migration slide, that's just, that's actual current student data for the last three years. What I think you're asking here is more, it's based on those planning areas. So our analyst will review that and look at the demographic trends on each individual level. So if there's different neighborhoods that have been having an increase in population, all of that's factored in to our projections. So we look at that. Using our census data and then just using where new housing is being located and the turnover of houses. All of that's going to be inside the projections built into the model of where those neighborhoods are residing in each school. Does that help?
Well, I, I mean, one thing that I'm concerned about, or at least interested in determining is what is the projected growth of students who would qualify for the dual-language program who are native Spanish speakers? That has increased over this district pretty steadily as our elementary numbers have remained flat overall. So I, I haven't seen that data as part of this presentation yet.
No, as far as like addressing the dual-language program, we don't have that included in the enrollment analysis. This is more of if everything stays the same and what the outlook of our deep dive into the data is. I think anything on that topic is going to come at a later time with more of the boundary conversation.
Well, and I, I don't think that we can predict the newcomer immigrant students. I mean, we hear of families coming and then sometimes that just doesn't pan out. So I know that we have had an increase, which we, you know, we, yeah. Well, we don't, we're not, we don't have a way to predict. I think we know, we have unaccompanied minors who come. We have families that we hear, there's a, you know, we hear that their family's coming from the Chicago area. And sometimes they arrive and sometimes they don't. So I mean, we can look into that and see if there's a way for us to predict that. Yes, turn your mic on.
It's become a city, welcoming city.
And we are as well. We're a sanctuary welcoming city here in Urbana.
Yeah, well, since the area is a sanctuary, more people is coming. And like I say, I work from the New American Welcome Center. I work directly with the immigrants and I can see the new arrivals with families every day. And I feel that is a way because people is already talking about housing and how to accommodate the needs from the new immigrants. I feel like the school district should be prepared for that as well. And if we are determining where we're going to have the dual-language program, it should be something that should be on the table from now.
And I think that's what, one of the issues is she's saying we are experiencing here, not just for our immigrant Spanish speakers, but our Congolese students too. That our issue is we don't have very great options for housing. And so a lot of families are choosing to live in Champaign. And we heard that from some of our French families when we've been talking to them about French dual-language. Is, I think that's one of the issues that Urbana is, is dealing with right now. I think there's some plans for the future in that, in the next five years that the city has some property. But right now, I think that is the biggest barrier to families coming here is we don't have a lot of options for housing. And you can see where they are in her maps that she showed, so.
I guess just from a very high level, you know, the board has a decision to make with regards to the placement of the dual-language program. And one of the questions that you could help us answer that would help us make that decision is, you know, projections with regards to the growth of that population. If, if there's information that you need from us or from some other source, have it help, you know, get a five-year projection of that, that would be really useful to us.
Yeah, that could be something that maybe we provide at a later time. It's not included in this report as this is just like that enrollment analysis. At the overview, but something that we could work with between us and administration of addressing that and having some sort of scope of that program for your decision.
Please, please go ahead, Rafi.
So I came in late in the middle of this presentation, but have you already shown those hotspot maps? Okay, so. Alright, well, so my question is basically about what's been asked about with the hundred fifty coming into elementary roughly and then balanced with a hundred fifty leaving. The question is, you know, there's a statement with those hotspot maps about how it's on the east side and kind of the northeast side where people are moving into the district. But where are they leaving? You know, are they leaving from those same areas? Are they leaving from, say, the west side or the south side?
So the map that's here on page seventeen is our count change. And so this kind of works alongside the heat map of looking at the past five years. So where you see green, and especially like the very bright green, are those neighborhoods where student, students have been. So the total number of students have been decreasing in those neighborhoods. Versus the dark orange, where if you like, look at that, the overview with the heat map of where we have been seeing student growth.
It seems like that's pretty balanced over some years, is how we maintain two thousand elementary students. So it seems like at some point, the decreasing places will dry up.
Yeah, so there's a lot of like, which is kind of is a subdivision lifecycle. So we see like when new units come online. They tend to have the highest yield rate of students that they will ever have. And then it will decrease over time as you know, empty nesters, kids age out and parents stay in those houses. So that's when we kind of see this green, this re-greening. And it's what we're trying to visualize and pinpoint in our data is at what point do those residential units turnover, like new families buy into the neighborhood and we see that increase of our students. So all of that, all that planning area data is kind of factored in from this map and even background data leading into those projections.
Alright, and then my other question is that, you know, there is a slide that shows, or a map that shows the median incomes. And my question there just has to be, are you able to get data more honed down than just like block data? And the reason I ask that is because there's some neighborhoods there. You know, north of Florida, east of Lincoln, in that corner, where you have four hundred thousand dollar homes, but they're listed at less than fifty thousand because they're coupled with apartment complexes that have like two hundred college students in there with no income. So because if you're going on block data only, then those neighborhoods are listed as probably poor neighborhoods. But they're really some of the fancier neighborhoods in town.
Yeah, for the median home value map, we're just using, we just have that single-family home perspective. So anything that is multifamily is not included in the analysis. And then I could work with our analysts to see if we could get a more granular scope. This is usually those planning areas that we have been using throughout the report. But I could work with my team and see if there is maybe census blocks, if those are more granular than this view.
Are the, are the home mobile units considered a unit?
So for the mobile homes, those are considered in the multifamily, not single family.
So mostly our students from the Latino community live in a mobile unit. So it will be important for us to know also that data and include it in the district to know where are they.
On the heat map.
Any other questions? I guess I, I do have one more. I was looking at the outflow. I noticed the outflow was particularly higher in the high school. So I'm guessing that also includes students who drop out. That would count as outflow?
It would, yeah. If that student ID leads, that counts as that outflow of outmigration at the high school.
I mean, we've seen an increase in that over the past, you know, three or four years in particular. So I'm guessing that's contributing factor.
Yeah, Tori asked me the same thing when Jenna was talking. And I think that is definitely a number we want to shore up. And as we've been talking about increasing our graduation rate, so unfortunately, that is a higher number than we'd like it to be right now.
Any other questions? So it's, RSP are our partners in this, in this whole process. If there is information that you as board members need to help you make the really important decisions we have coming in front of us. It's imperative that we get questions through administration to RSP as soon as possible so that we can collect the data that we need to answer the questions that are in front of us. So, so please, please engage. And that speaks to the public too. If you have questions that you would like to have answered as part of this process, please let us know. Thank you very much for your presentation tonight.
Jenna, are you gonna stay on for a few minutes while we talk about, okay. So on that last slide, the key considerations that Jenna showed were at the bottom, there are next steps listed. So I just want to put this reminder out there again that we are continuing to, as Paul said, kind of work side by side with RSP to continue to talk about the elementary boundaries, our next steps. We had a meeting with them just this past Friday where we're just starting very early conversations about those boundary plans. And as you can see, what they are providing is pretty comprehensive and quite a bit of data to to digest and kind of look through and comprehend. And so I really, as Paul said, encourage our community and people who have I mean, these, this slide, it's the key consideration. One, John, you went by it. So, yeah, so we've talked about the timeline. I just want to put the timeline out again. So we're gonna have a conversation right now and talk a little bit about next steps for those three, our three elementary schools that we're considering for dual language. So there's going to be community input facilitated in February, actually February twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth to be specific. And then bringing forward a boundary plan in April to the board to consider. And, and basically, the next steps of the work that RSP is going to do is really focus on the boundaries. Remember, our, all of our elementary schools feed into the middle school and high school. So most of the conversations around the boundary plans are going to really be impacted by the dual-language, the single-school dual-language program. So, you know, the board is very aware that by choosing the one school model. Then that means we only have four other elementary schools then to move students around and therefore figure out what those boundaries are going to be. So tonight, what I want to talk about a little bit is I know a few weeks ago, the board asked us to kind of give a little more parameters around that. If that, even if that meant like administration choosing one, which we're not going to do because we, we are working very collaboratively with RSP. Because they are doing a really exhaustive analysis. But what we would like to talk to tonight about is the possibility Um, but what we would like to talk to um tonight about is the possibility of the board considering maybe streamlining um from thinking about three schools to thinking about two. So John, if you want to pull up. So initially I was just gonna talk to the board about this, but um having an e-learning day today kind of helped me put some slides together to be able to um have something that we can put online and um share with the community instead of just having a conversation, which is what I initially planned. So um, if you want to go to next steps. So right now, administration will continue working with um RSP. Like you've heard from Jenna tonight, you've heard from Rob, there are other members of their team that meet with us. Um, we'll continue to review our enrollment analysis data. Um, they are doing a great job getting ready to kind of pull together the boundary plan information that would really help us um think very critically around which school should we identify as the Spanish dual language school. And remember, the choices are Thomas Paine, Dr. Williams, or Yankee Ridge. So um, to better focus our resources, our feedback and input, um seeing the comprehensive information that we are receiving, um, I'm a little worried that if we uh pull together uh that kind of um information for three different schools, uh, it might be really difficult for us to get um the kind of feedback that we want from the community if we are uh putting forward three really big um choices. Uh, I think there are some things that we want to talk to you guys about today. Um, and in terms of, instead of considering three options, that we really talk about which two um buildings are really the most viable to consider um as our next dual language school and narrow those choices between Thomas Paine, Dr. Williams, and Yankee Ridge. So primarily, we really want to talk to you about um Dr. Williams for the remainder of this presentation. So some priorities for the board to consider, um, of the three schools, uh, Dr. Williams has, um, and you've seen the maps, so um, that's why it was, it was really uh timely that we could talk about this following the uh, all the boundary, all the enrollment maps and the heat maps and the density maps and everything that Jenna was able to show us. We can see the highest percentage of students within walking distance um are at Dr. Williams, so sixty-two percent of those students. Um, Dr. Williams also has the highest number of students living in poverty um in their area. Uh, the highest number of students who have been displaced from their elementary school and their neighborhood um is, we have displaced three hundred and six students since two thousand seventeen. I know we've talked about that a lot. Um, and the second highest number of our black students, uh, basically um in terms of student enrollment are Dr. Williams students. So Yankee Ridge is the highest right now with two hundred and forty-six black students out of four hundred and fifty-five. But we also have to remember that number includes a hundred and forty students from the Dr. Williams neighborhood. Um, and then Dr. Williams, of course, has a hundred and ninety-one out of their five hundred and four students um that are currently black, that are not in dual language. So other priorities for the board to consider, um, we know the majority of the black families from the neighborhood are currently not choo- choosing to participate in dual language. So before we make a decision to place the dual language program in a school um in a neighborhood that is um eighty per six, eighty-six percent high poverty, where most of the students can walk to school, uh, we also need to consider that the majority of the students who are currently there are not choosing to be part of the dual language program. So six percent of the black students um that are there are choosing to be part of Spanish dual language. So for several reasons, and we don't know what those reasons are, um, the neighborhood families have not chosen to be part of that program. Um, I know initially when the program started years ago and we didn't really put trend data here, but um, we talked about the fact that, you know, when the program first started, there were a lot of the black families from the neighborhood who actually did um join the program. But I think it was um over time harder uh for those families to continue to um do some of the things at home um that families need to do um in order to support their students in a Spanish dual language program. Um, inside, we saw a um kind of a pattern of families starting in kindergarten and either leaving by first grade or second grade. And so right now, we have very few students who um actually live in the neighborhood that are in the program. Um, for several reasons, many of the black that black families um at Dr. Williams have been overflowed. Um, and right now, when we kind of look at who those students are, um, we look at their participation in um programs, we look at their participation in things like uh parent teacher conferences, um, the ability for them to uh participate wholly and fully um as a family. Uh, we're not seeing that uh high level of of participation for some of the families that have been overflowed. Some of the reasons might be transportation. I don't have a way to get from, you know, my Prairie Green apartment to Yankee Ridge or to um a school that I might be overflowed to. Um, so I think having those students being able to come back to their neighborhood is um, would be significant for them. Other priorities for the board to consider is how can we better support the Easter banner neighborhood? Um, you know, I know as a community, we have seen um some of the struggles um in the neighborhood with crime, um, food insecurity, um, there's just a lot of uh, lot of needs in this neighborhood. And I think as a district, um, instead of displacing more students from that neighborhood, we need to be making every effort to do what we can um to help bring that community back together and to um make them whole instead of yet again moving more students out of their neighborhood if we were to place the dual language program there. Um, academic achievement needs, I know we've talked um here uh about our school report card designations and we've heard that Dr. Williams is currently our only um intensive designated school. Um, they were designated comprehensive prior to this year, um, which means um, they have for the last five years been considered an underperforming school. Um, right now, that intensive designation is also um a designation which um indicates they are one of seventy-five schools whose performance remains in the lowest performing five percent of Title One eligible schools statewide. So that is something that we are um aware of. It is something that we are, um, Kim is meeting regularly with the uh, the representatives and consultants from the state board. Uh, Ms. Jackson is in those meetings, Ms. Smith, um, just planning ahead of how are we going to really um with a laser-like focus, focus on the academic needs of not just the students that are currently there who are from the neighborhood or from um who currently are in dual language, but what we might do for the future. So I know one of Ravi's questions at our last meeting was what happens to the designation um funding um in the school improvement funds that uh, that are part of the um, that designation of intensive. So um, what we have found out is that the funds actually stay with the school. They don't follow the students. Um, and by having the the funding amounts, we put the amounts here at the bottom for you to see. Kim, you want to share what those amounts mean again?
Yeah, those amounts, so seventy thousand dollars will be for this year for DPW, that's the planning year. And what I discussed previously are those needs assessments that we'll be doing with the American Institute of Research where they have individuals, a team that will be doing observations, focus groups, and providing a feedback. We're hoping for that report before spring break. So that seventy thousand dollars is for planning this year. And then over the next three years, that's how the money will be distributed incrementally for a total of two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for the school improvement plan. So just to reiterate, for all of our schools that are receiving school improvement funds, those funds will stay with the schools.
So as you saw in the um heat maps and density and numbers maps that Jenna shared, um, by having those additional funds, we can really focus our school improvement efforts by um providing resources um to the students. Uh, if we, if we remove Dr. Williams as a possibility for dual language, we can really focus those um, those resources on the students that are now, right now overflowed all over the district. Um, that doesn't mean that we don't have funding and resources for, of course, our emergent bilingual students. Uh, we have other funds that we are going to um focus on the uh Spanish dual language program. Um, we have a grant, the Title Three Grant, that is designed very specifically for our bilingual students. So that funding would be then now the focus, um, kind of like we have these school improvement funds that we can generate and focus toward um the intensive designated stu- school and the students who would be there. We can also um take our Title Three Grant funds that we receive um and focus those toward the uh Spanish dual language program and our emergent bilingual students. So these next couple of charts, we thought we might um compare uh another, you know, just to show the differences between the three schools and give you a little more perspective to consider uh why removing Dr. Williams um from consideration uh would kind of make sense. So Kim's gonna walk us through these.
Okay, so the next three slides will um provide the weighted index chart, chart, and this can be found on our school report card site um for each school. And I shared these before when we were designated, but I thought it would be a nice reminder when we look at these three schools. Um, so when you look, this is divided in a couple ways, just as a reminder. Um, ELA proficiency, ELA growth, English language progress to proficiency, science proficiency, and math proficiency, all focused on the academic indicators. And then the um other portion is chronic absenteeism and the climate surveys. And so when you um bring all of those percentages together, it would be a total of one hundred percent. And so when you look at Dr. Williams's weighted index chart, when you average those in all those areas, we see a total of twenty-two point five-four. And so intensive is the designation um due to being um in the lowest performing group, but also because we've been through a cycle of school improvement and we were comprehensive previous previously. So again, this is, you'll have this reference in the presentation. And you can also um on the state report card site, you can click on any of those boxes to dive in a little bit deeper. And so this is for DPW and then the next slide will represent Yankee Ridge. And so that's a targeted score of um, or comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive of thirty-one point eight-one. So our two schools that will be having uh the American Institute of Research coming in will be DPW and Yankee Ridge because they are both uh comprehensive and intensive. Um, none of our other schools will be doing that unless we would make a decision to use school improvement funds to have them come in. But this is a requirement of the state that we partner with them. Um, and so you'll see thirty-one point eight-one overall for Yankee Ridge when you average all of those um weighted indices together. And then finally, is Thomas Paine with the targeted um designation and thirty-nine point seventy-nine. So just wanted to share those as we look at comparing those three sites.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Um, so next is, is just to give the board, just to, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna really go into the history of it all. I know we've talked about it a lot, but um just to give the board that perspective of um the um the, this is an opportunity for the board to kind of publicly acknowledge the need to unify the Dr. Williams community um and provide more access to resources and supports for DPW students and their families. Um, it, it would send a tremendous message of support uh to that neighborhood if the board were to say um, right now, it is our responsibility to kind of repair the harm and and some of the damage that we've done um by not redistricting before now um and not really um addressing the the need uh that we have seen year after year after year. That heat map didn't just develop in this year. That has been an ongoing issue, um, that density map that was shared um has been a problem for for many, many years. And so um, it would send a really strong message to, I think, the community who we often don't hear from. There aren't very many people from the Dr. Williams community coming to this meeting. Um, we don't hear people jumping up and down, talking year after year about being overflowed. Um, so nobody is really advocating for them. Um, so it is really the board's responsibility to step up and say uh, we really want to do what we can to help um to write some things and repair the harm in that community. So um, next is just some more data. Uh, we want to continue to work with RSP um to really develop a boundary plan that would um unify as many Dr. Williams families um back into their neighborhood, um, back into their community as we most possibly can. Again, three hundred and six students have, have been removed from the, the being able to walk to their home school. Um, we also have uh homeless uh students. I know that was just another data point that we continually watch, that right now we have a hundred and eighteen homeless students in the district and seventeen of them, of them are from that neighborhood, um, which is the most for all of our elementary schools. And I know Jenna already shared the intra-district transfer table, but it just, um, this is just another reference point to kind of show you, you know, where we've kind of been overflowing the students um from Dr. Williams for many, many years. So right now, there are a hundred and forty students uh from the Dr. Williams area currently attending Yankee Ridge. So that's huge. Um, and uh, I just thought putting that and kind of highlighting that data point for you to uh have it um be some, something that really stands out to you as we talk about this. So I know um, we had a lot of conversations about Wiley when we were talking about moving Wiley students together um and giving them the opportunity to kind of be um together in their new schools this year, which is going really well. Um, one benefit of focusing on Thomas Paine and Yankee Ridge is that RSP then now can work on creating boundary plans with us where we can move students together and we can help relocate um large groups of Thomas Paine um students or if that is the school that's chosen, or Yankee Ridge students if that's the school that's chosen um and kind of move them together in large groups through the redistricting process, which is basically what we did um with Wiley. So we moved, I want to say a hundred and ten, is that right, John? Wiley students are at Thomas Paine right now. Um, and and that would be kind of the, a similar process um as to what we uh could do once we chose uh between those two schools and we work with RSP to do that. Yeah.
I'm sorry, maybe I'm just really foggy. Um, so you mentioned that Wiley, the students are in Thomas Paine, the majority?
Not all of them, a, a large group of them, yes.
That's where the, the majority is in Thomas Paine.
Yes.
So by choosing Thomas Paine, then those kids need to move again.
If, if that was the school that was chosen, yes. And I think RSP will be able, they will show all of that data. They'll show us where all the Wiley students are, where the Wiley teachers are. And I think that that will definitely be a decision, we're not making that decision tonight. Tonight, we're really trying to focus our conversation on Dr. Williams, but yes, as the, for part of the public input, moving forward, that would definitely be one of the data points that I think many people will be talking about and looking at is um not wanting to have those students have to be moved twice.
But then that's just put it us in the corner because we cannot move Leo because it's not enough. Why, uh, Dr. Williams, we cannot move it because of the population. Uh, Thomas Paine, we cannot move it because majority of Wiley kids are there and we don't want to move it again. So the only choice we're giving us, Yankee Ridge.
I'm not saying that's the only choice. I'm saying what I would like to do is give the RSP folks a little more um, just help them uh streamline their work. So instead of trying to work through these three big huge choices, we just kind of give them the two choices and and let them kind of um give us the options. So they are very early, they haven't really even started putting together like what those plans would look like. Um, so. I'm reading your eyes, Sitlali.
Yeah, so, I mean, you are, you.
I'm not doing anything, I just, I'm.
There's, there's no, there is no choice that we can make between the three buildings that will not disrupt.
Someone.
It's, it's, it's impossible. We have to make relative. We have to make relative judgments with, with what population of students were more willing to disrupt.
Absolutely, and like Madam Florence was here tonight making an appeal for the French dual language students. So I think no matter, you know, where we um put the program, there's someone that is going to be displaced unfortunately.
And I think also important, as RSP starts this work, they're looking not in the vacuum of just like where the dual language program is,
Yeah.
but they're integrating it with the redistricting process. So they're looking at the total populations of all the schools and the whole redistricting process, but they can't really do that unless they have like something to narrow in on the dual language portion.
So um.
Quick question.
Oh, yeah.
Um, when you talk about um walking distance, are you considering up to one point five miles?
The one point five miles, yep. Anytime we talk about a student's ability to walk, it's one point five miles. Um, so last slide here is, uh, I guess we really are asking the board to um really consider the priorities and the, if you wanna go to the next slide, John? Um, all the things we've kinda talked about in terms of the impact um that putting the dual language program at Dr. Williams um would have on not just the neighborhood, but a whole community. And I, and I, I hear what Sitlali is saying, it doesn't matter where we're going to do that, um someone will be disrupted, but I do feel that uh we've already disrupted this community for many, 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 many years. And so um, you know, it is our responsibility at this point to um do what we can to shift our focus on uniting the East Urbana community, um really helping work with whoever is willing to come to the table um with us about eliminating barriers, uh really increasing a sense of belonging and pride um back to that community and really im- improving the outcomes for not just the students there, but just the residents in the, in the um neighborhood itself. Um, I had the privilege of, long, long time ago, uh doing my administrative internship there um when Gail Jeffries was the principal, nineteen eighty-nine, I think. I did my type seventy-five, no, nineteen ninety-one or ninety-two. And Janice Mitchell wasn't even working for the district, she was a parent. And that, and the school was all black. I mean, there were a few uh white kids, but it was mostly a black neighborhood school. Um, and there was a strong sense of pride, um black pride, um just, it, it was a real community. Um, and sure, there were challenges, academic challenges and other things. I know when Mrs. Smith um became principal, we were principals together and there were, all of those challenges still existed. Uh, but the neighborhood uh thrived. Um, and there was, there were more options and resources for the community. And I think as a district, we have really um played a hand in some of the things that have maybe happened in that community because we really have dispersed the students kinda all over the place. Um, and we really have broken their community up. Um, and so I, I feel like it really is our time to uh, as a district, work with the city and whoever else we need to. Um, I know the Health and Wellness Center will be right next door with the Park District. Um, so I think there are a lot of uh upcoming ways that we can really bring a sense of belonging and pride uh back to East Urbana. And the first way that we do that is just to tell this community right now um that we are going to make them whole and not um, and not um put the dual language program at their school. And kinda shift our focus with RSP um moving forward on really bringing the board uh robust boundary plans um that look at those two options beyond just kinda the small things that we're talking about today. Like John said, they are going to really um dive into all the details um related to where students would live and a lot more factors than what I'm talking about today because I am not the expert there.
So, so to be clear, is, is administration seeking direction from the board with respect to?
Can you go to the next slide? So that is basically what this slide says, is I would like the board to um give us permission to continue to work with Jenna and Rob and their team to really focus um the public input that is upcoming, the survey data that will be going out, um and really trying to focus all that feedback and public input that we receive around um the most viable, I would think, two DL options, um Thomas Paine and Yankee Ridge.
Uh, board, now would be the time for questions or comments. Uh, please go ahead, Robbie.
So uh, before I make my comment on this, I want to ask a question about this process. And so will there be, uh, like, is the first time we're gonna see a map is in April? Or will there be like some tentative maps prior to February twenty-eighth that could then be discussed at those public input sessions?
So did Jenna stay on? That was kinda, I wanted her to stay on and talk about that.
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay, so Jenna, do you wanna talk about the February twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth a little bit?
Yeah, for sure. So that would be um the first time the maps are going at least out to the public for the public um input. So what we typically do is we would post those um beforehand and have the survey links there. So we could do something if you guys are wanting more of a board presentation of what goes out to public forum before that. Um, that's possible. I just know we have built out in the process that that would be the first public input, uh maps that are posted.
Well, so let's say we drop Dr. Williams. So will the surveys go out with, you know, one is Thomas Paine is the single DL, and here's what the rest of the map looks like, and here's Yankee Ridge, here's what the rest of the map looks like? Or is there gonna be, and then after public input, is it just between the two? Or is it how we can flex the boundaries a little bit on a given map?
So that's basically what I'm at. Go ahead, Jenna.
As I said, the process is very fluid. So I think right now what we're working forward is at least one concept that would look at Yankee Ridge and one concept that would look at Thomas Paine. Um, but basing off, it's um very hybrid as far as where the public lands and kinda the input that we take between administration and the public of what that looks like at the end. Um, so, yeah, Dr. Ibertein, if you have anything to add there?
Yes, I was just gonna say, basically, Robbie, yes, that is what we are asking tonight, is that we focus our um, the maps and the boundary plan information that RSP would be bringing forward to the community around um what those plans would look like if Thomas Paine or Yankee Ridge are the dual language sites.
I have a question. Uh, so right now, I understand that Thomas Paine is where he hosts most of your uh special needs kids. He has ramps and he has already the battery on sides and everything ready for that. So if.
Those are all things that I think that um Jenna and the team would bring forward in terms of there are lots of pros and cons, I think, for both buildings. And you're bringing up a couple right now, talking about um special education and the, where the current Wiley students are. But I think what RSP will do, working with us, is tease out all of those pros and tease out all of those cons and put them before the public, um and say, here are the plans, here are the pros and cons for both, and then we'll collect input um and feedback on those.
Does Yankee Ridge have all this accommodation for special needs kids?
So right now, the Yankee Ridge program has the intensive instruction um program that has been there for many, many years. Uh, and um it is a, it is a uh one-level building. And so all of our buildings have to have specific ADA um Americans with Disability Act accommodations. So um we could put um a cross-categorical program in any of our schools. We could put it at King. We, we could also put it at Leo, it's a little more challenging with the elevator and the second floor. But um, yeah, all of our buildings are compliant, so we could have that program be anywhere. But right now, it currently is at Thomas Paine, so you're right.
And um the French program is in Yankee Ridge.
Yankee Ridge.
Hypothetically uh speaking, if we host Spanish and French in Yankee Ridge, it has a capacity for?
Yes, so uh, the only reason we're even considering any of these three buildings is that they have the capacity for it. Um, they have the capacity for the current program, um and they would have the capacity for some growth. Now, I know we, you were asking about predicting immigrant numbers and we haven't done that, but we definitely have uh built in the fact that we know that the program will grow. Um, more people will wanna participate and be part of it, um now that it would be housed in one building, for sure.
Thank you.
Jenna, did you wanna add anything? No? Okay.
These are great questions, does anybody else?
I think Robbie had another one.
Please go ahead.
I have my uh, my statement on this topic now. So the uh, the thing, uh, one thing about this whole, uh, you know, at the prior meetings, we're talking about what are the goals of the board with redistricting. Uh, it was really to have equitable distribution for amongst socioeconomic and uh like race ethnicity across the remaining four schools. So um, one thing about this discussion is, you know, so I'll preface this by saying that I'd be hard-pressed to make Dr. Williams a single dual language school for the whole idea of taking away that school from that neighborhood. But uh, with that said, uh, what's been described in this presentation is creating a predominantly black, predominantly poor school. Uh, so if you do that, it's gonna skew by far, and the other three schools will be, you know, it won't be equivalent or as near as we can get amongst their four remaining schools. It's gonna be basically a segregated, poor, black school, and then three other schools is what you're gonna have. And this is uh basically, you know, what people are trying to do in the nineteen sixties, you know, when they're dividing school districts. So we're taking, we've gone full circle back to the nineteen sixties with uh, you know, blacks go over there, other people go over there. So that's the problem I have with, with that. And so um I would rather have all three options on the table for discussion, even though, as I said, I'd be hard-pressed to take away Dr. Williams in the end.
So I think you're being really literal um and a little dramatic, I'm just gonna say. I think the RSP people, that is what they do. Um, and they took the board's um your wishes and, and they would take that into consideration. And I don't think they would bring back a boundary plan that would be a hundred percent black, a hundred percent low income. Um, because that we're charging them to come up with a plan that is as equitable as we can have it be. Now remember, our community is seventy percent low income in and of itself. So that isn't a number that we can run from anywhere, except maybe in one neighborhood. Um, but low-income um families and students is part of our reality, is part of the community that we serve. And so I think what we're asking RSP to do is bring us the most equitable option that they can while allowing us to bring as many Dr. Williams students back to the neighborhood as we possibly can.
I'll just follow up and say, I agree with what you're saying. But what I'm saying is that in order to balance the districts, they're going to take people out of those neighborhoods and assign them to different schools. So that's how they're gonna do that.
Well, the, I mean, I.
Also, walking distance, as I've heard a thousand times here, is not a metric for dividing schools. So that's not even been mentioned. Uh, and then the other thing is, this whole phrase laser-like focus, usually the laser's pointed at one goal. So I wouldn't use that terminology either when describing this, unless you have only one goal.
Well, my laser-like focus right now is academic achievement and making sure that our students can learn. And so that is the laser-like focus that we're doing for basically.
That's what you want.
That is my laser-like focus as superintendent, so.
Um, also, there've been lots of changes in our community too. Housing that was originally built for students, now young families and young families who cannot, at this point, have a, purchase a home. So I think that you're gonna see a lot of that in the southeast as well of Urbana, as well as the northeast. And it was, and also much further north where the, the highway is and, and some of the mobile home tra- um trailer parks as well. So I think that there's gonna be quite an opportunity to balance the schools.
I mean, we, we're already a, a plurality African-American district. So, and they, you know, they're, they're not confined to two areas of town, obviously. Um, so I think that we can do things with our partners to do what we can to have some amount of racial balance and economic balance between our buildings, but we also wanna try to uh restore that neighborhood. I'm in favor of excluding uh DPW from, from our list to simplify our decision-making going forward. But I'm, I'm anxious to hear the thoughts of, of my fellow board members.
I'm in support as well. I mean, I think there's so many different angles and, you know, I just, I just really, um, almost I'm not commenting right now 'cause I'm a little heated. Um, you know, we talk about choice of words, uh, I think you need to watch your choice of words too, Robbie. At the use of poor black kids, you can keep that. Even if they are poor black kids, we're not here to, to call that out. So be appropriate, just as appropriate as you want everybody else to be. Period. Um, we do, we've gotta restore this neighborhood. I don't care if the school ends up predominantly black. We already have a predominantly black school. Um, I think it brings in a sense of pride that probably will surprise a lot of people who are making assumptions as to what can be in a school that is predominantly black. And how disrupted, simple things that kids who are not in this district don't even think about, like having to get up extremely early in the morning. You know, these are um families who are often single-parent homes, who are often working multiple jobs, who have children that us adding to the fact that they're going somewhere else, and I think I counted like forty-one percent if my math is right, which is just insane. These are kids who maybe would be in an after-school program that allows them to get the additional education they need, but what parent is gonna be able to go pick them up from a school across town that's not in their neighborhood? You know, there's so many different um pieces of this that we just need to look at, and we do need to make it right. I mean, this district has had a long history of um, of displacement of, of black children, smart, brilliant black children that regardless of where their families fall on the income scale, need to be given a chance and an opportunity. And I think we robbed them of that. And it's not to say they're the only ones, but they are the most displaced. And our data says it, that over and over again, we've just said, oh, it'll be okay, you know? I- if we're gonna have change in this district, if we're gonna try to make our numbers better, we cannot keep doing the same things that we're doing. It's not gonna work. I mean, that's, it's a dumb approach, if you ask me. So this is one of the changes that, that I think is a good opportunity. You know, I've seen some really good things at King, you know? It's a predominantly black neighborhood. And even if a lot of them are poor, what does that have to do with their ability to learn? Absolutely nothing. But if we treat it like it does, then it affects their ability to learn. So we gotta treat them like we should be treating them, the geniuses that they are and can be, as opposed to worrying about household income. And we've gotta help their families because part of the issue in the community with the fact that some of these families are working multiple jobs is a community problem. And I know that as an HR person. It's a community problem. It's a, it's a, a lack of opportunity. And you can say what you wanna say about lack of opportunities, but I have twenty-three years of HR experience, don't tell me about lack of opportunity. So there's a lot of aspects that we have to hit in this community and this, it starts with schooling. It starts with employment. Those are key for us to turn this district around. We know what we're dealing with income, we know what we're dealing with, with um the, the makeup of our households. And we've gotta address those things if we think we're gonna have any sort of ability to even, to even a little bit change the needle. And quite frankly, it's gonna take years to do it. But if we don't start now, it's never gonna happen. So again, it's not to down any other neighborhoods, and I know there's plenty of minorities and non-minorities in every other neighborhood. Today, we need to talk about and think about and, and put some action behind this particular neighborhood because this is the particular neighborhood that we have done the most wrong for the longest. So I'm in support for those reasons. I'm willing to give this an opportunity. Um, I'm willing to put, put my, my uh mouth behind some action and maybe even myself. Think about investing my own time, once we get to the point of those kids getting back into their community, of helping with that sense of pride, of helping them know you're brilliant regardless of where you come from. You, you're gonna have opportunities, and your opportunity is, is to be just as smart as the kids that you're looking at in. as the kids that you're looking at in the LEO district or in any other district, in the Yankee Ridge district. You can outperform them if you want, if you have that opportunity, if you have teachers and administrators and board members that believe in you. When are we going to actually do and be about what we say that we want to do? We say we want to do this, what's the holdup? If we're sitting here saying, I likely would not vote on that, why even put it in the mix? That makes no sense. So I'm done because I'm getting heated again. I'm in support of this and, you know, we've got to do better. We've got to do better, period. We've got to do better.
Thank you, Tori. Please go ahead, Ben.
Thank you, Tori, for saying that. It's, you're scraping off this, you know, a patina that we, it's hiding conversations that we don't like to have.
And they're tough.
They're tough, yeah. So thank you. Thank you for those words. I agree. I was not too open to taking away Dr. Preston Williams from, from that community. Which, the heat map doesn't just show a certain type of population, it kind of shows where you need to help. And I believe that's, if this is another bird we can hit with one stone, then that, then we should do that. I mean, this is really, that's a, it's a, it's sad. The neighborhood is not sad, the circumstances that are in it is unfortunate and sad. So if we can do something to help them, giving back some agency, giving them a sense of community, really. And beyond that, helping, helping them know that they are geniuses and that they're not beholden to other people's opinions. So I'm, I'm for it. If it makes it easier for the, our consultants, then good. As a hail effect, I think this is something we need to do.
I have a question. So out of the two schools, the Yankee Ridge and Thomas Paine, which one has more capacity for the dual language program?
They both do. I, I think the consultants will do all that. They'll look at the student enrollment, they'll look at the capacity. There's a capacity map in there right now that we could go to. I don't know if John even still has it up. But in the packet, there's a capacity, I can't remember what the functional capacity was for each school, so I think you just pass it.
I think Yankee Ridge is slightly bigger, but they're really close.
Really close.
So like, close enough to like capacity between the two, wouldn't be a big factor?
No. I mean, like right now, if you even, so John pulled it up. So Thomas Paine's max capacity is six oh four. And for what our purposes, what we normally do for class size would be around four fifty-three. We don't have anything close to that there right now. Yankee Ridge, max capacity, six twenty-nine, yep, four seventy-two. So they're both are pretty close.
Yeah, and based on current dual language, Spanish dual language program enrollment, they both have capacity for the Spanish dual language program.
Handsome area to grow, so.
That's good. And like budget-wise, both schools can handle a dual language program? Like, or which one could handle it more budget-wise?
I think they, it would be the same. I know one of the things that Ms. Florence, Madam Florence talked about tonight was the concerns about the parent liaisons and the clerical people, and those are all things that we've thought about. And we're not cutting those positions. Those positions would follow the program. So I don't think the budget will be impacted much at all. We'll be picking up all the resources and just kind of putting them in one place.
So both Yankee Ridge and Thomas Paine are both like pretty much low-income areas? Okay.
I don't know neighborhood-wise that they are. I think the neighborhoods are really different and that the consultants will show us that when we look at the maps. And they already have a lot of the maps in there that talk about some of those things. But I think what my focus tonight is really, they have a lot of information in this enrollment analysis breakdown. And they would then need to tease all of that information and data out and bring the board a boundary plan that would hopefully satisfy a lot of the criteria that we've been talking about for both schools. Because there is a lot of data that they've already collected. They didn't even talk about all of it. So there's even several more slides in the appendix that, that people can look through. Sit, Lali.
Kind of forget, again, I'm sorry. In the survey that company is going to I heard tonight that they are not want to be when, when they necessarily want to be with the Spanish program.
Sure. So it would be, so what are the other choices for French dual language? They could stay at the school that they're at, depending on what, what, what school was chosen for dual language, or they could join the dual language school. I think there are several options. One of the things that we're going to do on the public input night is we will have a room for our French families to, so we'll have several spaces to break out into. There'll be a lot of breakout rooms. And so we'll hopefully invite a lot of the French dual language families to come and be part of participate. And we'll have, you know, a translator there. And the RSP people are very specific with how that input runs. So the district is just there to support them and they kind of provide the questions. They have a specific format that they use. And so we're going to invite our Spanish-speaking families, our, our French dual language families to be part of that and be in those spaces in their native language.
And even right now, our choice is to either include Dr. Williams in the, in the topic or leave it by themselves and just focus on two. And then they, they're going to let us know which one, for their perspective, is the best for the Duolingo program and which one is the best for the French program. And then we, as a board, we're going to decide which one.
Yeah, I don't, they're going to build boundary plans that include, want a school that is dual language and a boundary for, so it isn't just about the Spanish dual language program. It's about what's the best boundary for everyone while having one Spanish dual language school. Is that right, John? Is, I think that is.
Yeah, and that's the primary thing we're paying them for, is not just to, but you can't do it without kind of deciding where the dual language, because if you're kind of, you have, I think Yankee Ridge and Thomas Paine both have some disparate neighborhoods where there's kind of some students here and some students there. But once you have like, kind of a couple of options, you can kind of look at the totality of like what you're going to do with boundary, district boundaries that balances the other board criteria of neighborhood schools and racial equity. And you can start to put that all together to build a bigger picture.
So it means that some of the kids from Dr. Williams might going to be replaced, or no?
I think it's going to be just based on where they live. They're going to bring us the most robust plan. And I guess I don't want to sit here and make guesses and do and ifs and what if this because they're, they're going to do all that teasing around and, and bring us some maps that we will then consider. And I think what you said is exactly what's going to happen. Like Jenna said, they're going to kind of share those maps for the first time during that public input opportunity and via a survey. And then they'll collect all that data and then come back to the board with, here's all the data that we collected. And ultimately, it's still going to be the board's decision. RSP is just going to bring you boundary plans and provide you with options.
Do you have an opinion with regards to limiting Dr. Williams from further discussion? Sit, Lali.
Because I feel what Tori said, I really feel it because I think the same is happening with the community, with the Latino community, you know, that of be scared, be afraid, be segregated, coming from the poor families where there are already other, other impacts. But also was a little bit worried that in other words, I don't want, I was really worried that the Latino we are, for that perspective, like, oh, now we are having these poor people in the poor neighborhood in this school. And we don't give them the opportunity to go to other schools and then mix, you know, and learn from each other and balance. So not having Dr. Williams in the, in the top, in the plat, in the table also limited us decision on where the Duolingo program is going to be. And I understand everything, everybody's going to have some hurt regardless of whatever we decide. But I'm just worried to don't hurt those vulnerable communities. And LEO is not there, which is, the majority is really good people there, you know, but because of the, the size. So limiting the choices, that kind of scared me a little bit. So I really am in favor of keep the community and try to do wherever we can to improve that. But also, I feel like we should give the opportunity for them to speak up too. So what about if they don't want to keep all the kids in there and they do want to move? Because walking distance is like a dream in Urbana. Mostly the kids are going to be in buses. Mostly the kids are going to need to move around by bus. So I don't know why we are not giving that opportunity to our community, but I don't know anything about that community. And Tori knows more that she's in favor.
They are riding buses right now, that's probably the problem.
I'm in favor.
Sherry, have you?
I, I just really have a lot of hope that after the input from, from the consultants and after the parents' input that we're going to do the best we can to balance all the other four schools. And I think that we have to consider only the two, Thomas Paine and Yankee Ridge at this point.
So it's, it's not unanimous, obviously, but it sounds like the majority of the board.
Yep. And I'll touch base with Lola. I know, you know, we'll share the video with her. I know she's sick this evening and get input from her.
How will the dual language families know about this change?
So we're doing a lot of talking about it. So I mean, there'll be a lot of public input opportunity. Hopefully, I will get a lot of those families in the spaces as well on the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, so we can get input from them.
Like, but when they like register for school next year, how are they going to know where to like register? Like, how are you going to give the news?
Oh, we'll do all that this spring. We won't wait till next year.
So like, just like emailing them and sending mail?
So as soon as the board makes a, chooses a boundary plan in April, then we will be sharing it out widely and interacting and, and just basically talking with all families and communicating as much as we can between April and the end of the year. So people can like know where they're going to be and over the summer and make a lot of childcare and transportation and all those considerations, so.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you for this engaging discussions, guys. This is a vital. And thank you to RSP for, for helping us out as well. Our next administrative report of two of four is map review and update. So Christina Kail Lewandowski.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Christina Kail Lewandowski. I want to make sure you all can hear me okay and everyone at home. I know when I watch at home, I sometimes will say, oh, I wish that speaker would get closer to the mic. So I hope everyone at home can, can hear me okay. And I'm excited because I feel like tonight is data night, so, but I know it can also cause maybe some sleepiness. So I hope I can keep you all awake with all this data. So let's go ahead and get started. So this is the twenty-twenty-three reflecting this school year, fall and winter. We've had two benchmarks of data. Just going to walk you through pretty quickly. There's a lot of slides, but we're not going to go through all of them. This is measure of academic progress, data presented three times a year. And it is for K through twelve, and then we'll have a conclusion slide at the end. And so MAP is an interim assessment. And so basically what that means is basically how our students are doing in that moment of time. How are students performing? How are they showing growth? And we want to focus on learning, collaboration, and on results. And this assessment also serves as a universal screener to identify students in need of additional academic support, such as identifying dyslexia. And when we do that, when we use that assessment, it is called the MAP fluency. And we deliver that to our K-two students. And it also identifies, it also helps to support students with phonics, phonological awareness, listening comprehension, and picture vocabulary. And we use the assessment to support learning for all students across the achievement spectrum. It's available for grades K-12. And that's what's fascinating is that when we started in twenty-twenty-one, we are going to be able to follow the data with, with those groups of students all the way to twelfth grade. And so that's going to be fascinating to follow. It connects to our instructional ed tech partners for progress monitoring and personalized student learning. And so we want to really focus on student growth. And what we mean by that is when we did our fall benchmark, we have what's called a growth event. And then we have our winter benchmark data. And so we have our second growth event. And so if a student received a RIT score of, let's say, we'll just use the example written here, of one eighty-nine, and then they scored, this is in the way here, here we go. So they had a RIT score of one eighty-nine in math and in the fall of, oh, that was in the fall. And then a one ninety-one in winter, the student grew two RIT points. However, if the student's projected growth was three, then the student did not sustain, learning and achievement decreased. So you can just take a look at that graphic and you'll see what I mean by that. Now, another example, if the same student grew from winter to spring, a RIT score of one ninety-six, the student grew five points, student's projected growth was three, the student exceeded growth projection and achievement increased. And honestly, that is what we want. We want all our students to exceed their projected growth. However, if they meet their projected growth, that's fine too. That's what we want to see as well. And we're also going to look at some, some charts later in this presentation regarding that. So basically, we're going to see math data to, that's going to include the Spanish math assessments, reading, Spanish assessments. We're going to look at assessments that'll break it down, break down the data by race and other demographics. So this graph, this fun-looking graph is being displayed this way because, sorry, I'm getting this little thing out of the way here. Because this is the way, when we look at IAR data, we want to just show it in a similar fashion. And so when you take a look at the hundred percent down here towards the bottom of the graph, we want to see our students showing growth, and this is showing math. We want to see our students over that one We wanna see our students over that one hundred percent line. And this is showing students in K-12, and I just inserted an arrow here at seventh grade. When you go through all these slides, and, and we're not going to do that, um, but when you do that on your own, you'll see a pattern of seventh grade. It, it's pretty fascinating, seventh grade is showing, um, a lot of growth in all the areas. And now let's take a look at the different schools that are showing growth from fall to winter. And I know, Ms. Tori, you mentioned King School earlier. Um, so you'll see here, King School has shown, uh, a lot of growth in the area of math. Now, let's take a look at reading. Um, we have the seventh graders, uh, showed high growth, forty-eight percent in the area of reading, along with the fifth graders who showed forty-six percent. The third graders and eighth graders, I wanted to just feature and highlight those two grade levels because third graders, that's the first time that they are taking the IAR. And so we want to look at third grade, um, and take a deeper dive into the growth areas in the area of reading. And then we have the eighth graders that are going to be going into high school. And so that, that's an area we wanna take a, uh, a look at. And then we can take a look at the schools in reading, you can see LEO School here showing a lot of growth. Now let's take a look at our Spanish. Students in sixth grade showed high growth, sixty-four percent in the area of Spanish reading. The fifth graders not showing as much growth. And we know that they are going to go right to the middle school. And then in the area of reading, we can see that the middle school, students showed the most growth. All right. Now, these are interesting slides because they're showing two different pieces of data. We have the slides on the left that is showing achievement data, and the slides on the right showing growth data. These are comparison group data. And I'm going to just really explain the left graph. So we have the dark red representing students' achievement performance that are, that performed less than twenty, in, less than the twenty-first percentile. And that's what that legend down here is pointing at. So let's take a look at that first bar graph. The F D L E stands for French Dual Language, English, Native English Speakers. So just take a look at that, look at that blue, that blue area are students that perform greater than in the eightieth percentile. All right. And we also can see the Spanish Dual Language, that our Native English speakers scored high achievement levels. And we can see that all students, um, all groups showed growth in the high average to high range.
And if I can interject just real quick on that slide, uh, Christina. So the way that is, it's broken down into quintiles, so if you were a like hundred percent average group, you would have equal-sized bars of the red, orange, yellow, and blue. So, uh, kind of the Spanish Dual Language, Spanish on the growth, they're kind of like equal. So if it's, uh, more blue on the top, that means they're overperforming kind of at the top end. And if it's more red at the bottom, that means there's a higher, uh, percentage at the bottom end.
Did I switch slides already? Oh, I did, okay. And for reading, we have the white group along with French Dual Language, Spanish Dual Language, that our Native English speakers scored high achievement levels in reading. French Dual Language over on the comparison growth group, uh, they showed the most growth in the high range. All right, now we're down to the summary here. So in math, we have fifty-one percent of students in K-12 that met their projected growth. In reading, we have forty-six percent of students who met. And I'm just going to skip to this bullet. Kindergarteners increased in the area of phonics from nine percent to twenty-three percent. Spanish eleven to twelve percent, and in phonological awareness, that's twenty-one to twenty-six percent. Spanish six to eight percent. That's really, really great. And then areas needing improvement, achievement gaps in reading and math have been identified for a number of our student groups. And so you've heard, um, Dr. Norton say this many times, you've heard Dr. Abby Tatum say this many times. Um, and so I would basically just be repeating it. But I just wanna just highlight, um, one of these bullet points, and that is the review of Tier One curriculum and pedagogical practices by conducting walkthroughs, grade level data discussions, department meetings, staff meetings. And one of the things that we pretty much already said this evening, we will monitor goals and action items in the school improvement plans. Um, one of our many next steps. And another thing that made me smile while I was sitting back there, because I heard this tonight as well, is that to increase student achievement, to increase student growth, it's going to take all of us. It's gonna take the school board, it's gonna take administration, it's gonna take the teachers, the parents, um, to work together to improve overall instructional practices. Um, and one of the things too that has an effect is attendance. Um, attendance has a big defect on student learning. And so if we all have high expectations for all of our students, we can do this. And I'm finished. Thank you.
All right, I, I thank you for, for presentation, uh, board members, any questions or comments?
I have one quick question, the graphs are really easy and to understand, so I'm glad you did it along the same as the other ones. But when you, when you talk about the projected growth, how is that determined? Because you had talked about the two and not three.
All right, thank you, I love that question. Um, so this is, um, this reflects the norm charts. And it also, every score is what we call RIT score. So if I'm a first grade student and in the fall I scored a one fifty-five, and then in the winter I scored a one sixty-five, so this is, uh, what we would call a growth event. And then this would be my second growth event. So basically, I grew ten points. It's just basic math, I just grew, I just took away one sixty-five minus one fifty-five, and I grew ten. So are you asking how is it determined, or?
Where'd you get the numbers for, is it based on these norms here, is?
It's based on these norms and past, um, yeah, the numbers of students who, um, performed in the past.
Anyone else? Please go ahead, Robbie.
So, uh, I, I have a question or two. So, uh, something that just sparked my attention with, uh, that last question. A couple of years ago, we were talking about how the scores were poor because the norm was done from a pre-pandemic year, and we were talking about the remote year. So have those norms then adjusted then, or is it twenty twenty is the norm now, so that is the pandemic year? So are we seeing actual improvement, or are we just seeing that the norm has changed?
Okay, the norms didn't change, it's still twenty twenty. And there are many schools in the United States that are begging MAP to please change your norms, um, because of COVID. And MAP is standing their ground, and they're like, no, we know these norms are before COVID. We know that COVID had an effect on student learning and on scores in some school districts, but, um, they are not going to change the norms. And I know there's talk in maybe a year or two of possibly adjusting it, but for now it's staying.
And then the next question is?
For one more thing on the norms, so the norms are based on the RIT for achievement, uh, but the, for growth is kind of insulated from the norms because regardless of the total RIT score, the absolute RIT score, the change from year to year is about the same.
All right, so my next, uh, question was, you know, this is a lot of data, and it's easy to get bogged into it and kind of lose yourself, uh, when looking at it, uh, but, uh, there's a couple of comments you made that I, I gotta ask about. One is, uh, you know, you said seventh grade had a really strong improvement or growth, but then eighth grade did not. So is that something that you've seen in the prior years as well? So then can you say there's something special about the seventh grade program that drops off in eighth grade, or is that just this year?
So it is a lot of data, I agree. Um, so one thing that I didn't read on this slide in regards to eighth grade, because we're looking at two different pieces, achievement data and growth data. So I'm going to point to the third bullet here in regards to eighth grade. Out of all the grade levels in the area of literacy, text, key ideas and details, they actually had the highest, um, in achievement, forty-one percent. So, so when I stated, when you look at seventh grade, you'll pick up a pattern, that was specifically for growth. So they are, they're showing a lot of growth, and I just thought that was interesting as I was looking at all the, um, different pieces of, of growth data.
All right, and then, uh, the last thing I was gonna ask about is, uh, you know, Spangl- or not Spanglish, but Spanish language arts. Spanish language arts, uh, fifth grade, you said, uh, compared to sixth grade, sixth grade is much higher growth than fifth grade. Now, my immediate assumption is that's because when you get to sixth grade, if you want to continue to take Spanish language arts, it's an elective. So they're probably teasing away people that otherwise, you know, it's not the same population. So everyone's gotta choose, am I gonna take strings or art, or am I gonna take Spanish language arts? So, uh, do you, like, like looking in past years, is that something there? Or is it like you're selecting for higher achievers because they're the ones that wanna keep taking Spanish language arts?
That is a good question that I would have to look into, yeah.
And Christina, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is the fall to winter growth? So for the fall to winter growth, those are the same sixth grade students who already chose that elective from the fall, and they're still there in the winter?
Yeah, that's true. What I'm saying is, there are people from fifth grade one year to sixth grade, so the sixth grade is not all the people that were in fifth grade DL.
Right.
Because people drop out of the Spanish language arts.
My, my point was that if they're already at the higher, higher achievement in fall quarter, that they would be, the growth percentage would be about the same as if they're at a lower achievement.
Yeah, I don't think you understand I'm saying John Gutzmer, okay? Yes, we'll agree to misunderstand on this one, right?
I think what he's saying is that because of the elective and the course schedule at the middle school, students who have been in dual language for many, many years, when they get to sixth grade now, um, have to make a choice in some instances of whether or not they wanna be in some of these elective classes, or whether or not they wanna stay in the full dual language program. So some of the students that are in this, um, data are students that are, um, are, many of them are emergent bilingual students who are in the dual language program because that's their program. But we've lost some of the, uh, English dominant kids because they choose to do things like band and do other activities. I think that's what you're, that's what Robbie's saying.
Yeah, then that, that would have an effect, so. Anything else, Robbie?
Um, I really, really appreciate the presentation on, on the raw numbers. I guess I have a few questions with regards to, okay, how does this feed back into the overall student improvement process and district improvement processes that are in place? Are, are, you know, this is filtered down, you know, per building or per subgroup per building? I mean, uh, what assistance are you giving building administrators with regards to, to tracking how they're doing with regards to their schools' improvement plans?
So that's a collective, um, team effort with the CIA team. Um, I think, um, Dr. Abby Tatum kinda hinted on it earlier with Dr. Norton, with, um, Ms. Yvonda Smith. Uh, one of the things we do, um, we conduct MAP meetings with the principals to help guide them and, um, support them and looking at their data. And so one of the things that we looked at, last week we actually had, um, MAP meetings with principals. And I just wanna quickly show you, just looking at their specific building, we looked at proficiency levels. And we also looked at how many students specifically met projected growth. And it was a different way to look at their data. So it didn't specifically look like this graph. This one is specifically for you all because it's a district view. But for a school view, I wanted principals to look at their data because we are two months away from IAR, right? And one of the great things about MAP is that it is a predictor of how we are going to perform on IAR. And so when you take a look at this specific one, it says it right at the top, projected to Illinois Assessment of Readiness taken in spring. And we want our students in green and in blue, levels four and in levels five. And if you just collect this data, seven point four percent, one point five percent. Um, then these are the numbers. And so I took that and gave that to the principals, and it was level one. Here's how many students, showed them how to access that on a spreadsheet, showed them who those students were, and we discussed ideas on how to support. And, uh, so that's one example.
Thank you, a- anybody else? All right, all right, thank you so much, we're on to our next presentation. Uh, we have a district crisis team update from, from Dr. Abby Tatum and, uh, John Gutzmer.
And so I'm gonna go through this one pretty quickly because I definitely do wanna get to our guests who are waiting patiently, Michelle and Jody and Amy, for the dyslexia presentation, um, which is really good, so we wanna get to that point, but, um, we, we have- But we, we have to kind of talk about some concerns that we have around safety and security right now at UMS. I think the slides are pretty self-explanatory, but I'm gonna just, Mr. Cooper's here. You know, we really, he wanted to be here so he could hear feedback from the board and we could kind of talk about the concerns that are just kind of right in front of us and just do it just very quickly. So recently, this, more than ever before, but just in the last few weeks at UMS, we have seen a sudden increase in small and medium sized knives being confiscated from students. It is a variety of knives. I think we, you know, we've seen more than we want to see. And it has caused significant alarm and concern from district administration, UMS administration. And we're gonna be having more conversations with staff here in the next few days and weeks to come. We've also seen an increase in vaping happening at the middle school level. Marijuana use, regular marijuana use, and then also weed vapes. Where you can kind of turn a vape into a device where you can use it to also smoke marijuana. So these are things that are societal issues, of course, that now have creep, crept into our middle school. And we are very concerned and just wanted to come forward and have a public conversation about our immediate plans of action. I know they may feel a little aggressive. But I think we are just wanting the board's approval, not so much approval, but letting you know, we are doing these things and I, I want our public to know we are aware that these things are happening and it's not okay and we're not gonna just let it continue. So we're kind of drawing the line in the sand with our administrators and our threat assessment team and our crisis team. And really gonna put some very aggressive measures and security measures in place moving forward. So as a lot of this information has been coming to us in the last few weeks, we pulled together our teams and started having conversations. Dr. Norton talked to several people at UMS to get more of a sense of, you know, what might be happening. And then we had a district crisis team meeting as soon as we got back from break. And Tori is the board representative on that team, so she was there and heard our conversation and basically the high level of concern that we have around some of the instances of not just knives, but the drug use and some of these other things that are happening. We, from that meeting, went directly to the UMS the very next week, threat assessment team and the crisis team and met with that group. And that is a large group of folks. It involves our, the UMS administrative team, the student interventionists, the assistant principals, the counselors, social workers, psychologists from the building. I think there are a couple ESP support staff people. So it is a really diverse group of folks and a really committed and dedicated group of people who are committed to doing something to help. So they're the people who, when a student has a knife or when a student has made a threat or something is happening, that is the team that pulls together and basically assesses that threat. Is it a viable threat? Is it a threat that we need to take to another level? What do we need to do? So it is a really diverse group of our itinerant and specialist folks who bring their expertise to that conversation. Tonight, we're having a board discussion about it. And right now I'm already in the works of trying to set up some parent meetings where we could get some of this information out to the parents from UMS who may or may not even be aware that some of these things are happening. So that will be kind of a next step. Through our conversations with the threat assessment team and talking about metal detection, that is kind of our main priority is we want to pinpoint who's bringing knives, what kind of knives are being brought into the building. We want to, one, implement metal detection as a deterrent more than anything. So once our students find out that we have metal detectors, hopefully it will curtail their use of bringing any of that into our school. The threat assessment team is on high alert. And, you know, Kim and I went and met with them and they, they're very concerned about this with administrators. So we originally went to the team to talk about, let's do some random weapon detection. Let's just kind of buy one or two and randomly kind of put them at different doors. And they are really wanting to be a little more, even more aggressive than we were, I think. And they wanted to have three metal detectors at door one every day. So we were really kind of trying to develop a plan of, let's just kind of do something randomly. Different doors, different days. But I think because this is something that they are very concerned about, they asked as a team to administration, can we have something at door one every day? That logistically is going to be a, a lot of work. It's gonna be time intensive, staff intensive, training intensive. We went through this at UHS and yes, it will be a lot of learning curve things, education that will have to happen in the, in the weeks to come. But it was their request and so we want to try to do what we can to make it happen. Then we would have a, another detector that we would still randomly place at different doors. So right now at door one, our eighth graders utilize door one, the yellow bus students come through door one. And students that want to eat breakfast go through door one. The students that, seventh graders go through door two, which is the ramp door and they go right into the deck areas. And then our sixth graders, like always for years and years and years, are continuing to use door four. So we would then work through a system where we would randomly place detections at those other two doors at different times. And we'll work with UMS, of course, to coordinate all of this. So then next slide, John has got this one.
Yep. So if you were here when we talked about metal detectors, the first time at the high school, they had some different issues that we were dealing with. And so we worked really hard to find some detectors that were gonna be high throughput that could really discern between more dangerous weapons, larger knives and guns and smaller things like cell phones and ear pods. So because most of the issues that have been happening at the middle school are medium to smaller knives with some larger knives and weapons as well, those aren't really as good of an option for the middle school. We've reached out to our partners and found some more sensitive metal detectors. The downside of that is for UHS with, they have kind of, they're running with three or four detectors right now. They can get all of the students for the whole school, about eleven hundred students in, in the morning before school starts. The reason we're kind of starting at the middle school focusing on the random screenings is because we'll have a lot more limited capacity with each detector. So it'll be lower numbers that we'll be able to get through quickly. But if we're doing random screenings, we'll be able to kind of catch those items as they're coming through. So here's just kind of a graphic of the metal detectors that we are looking at versus the ones we have. So on the side, you may have seen these in the high school if you've been there. They're very easy to kind of tune them to different specific kinds of weapons. They're battery operated, so they're extremely portable. We've taken them out to football games. You may have seen these used at amusement parks or some events where they have those. They're substantially higher cost than the ones that do the more strict metal detection. And they don't alert for small things, but they do still alert for laptops, Chromebooks and smaller cylindrical objects like umbrellas or for some reason Axe body spray canisters, just set it off every time. So it's, it's true. So the one on the right here, these are the ones that we're looking at for the middle school. And maybe as we go on, we might kind of do a mix and match with what we have at the high school as we continue to evaluate how we're implementing these and what makes the most sense. But these have a more moderate throughput. They're not as portable. They require electrical, like a powered wall connection, but they are still portable with wheels. The nice thing about the ones that we're looking at is that as you're going through, they also display the approximate location of where the metal is. So for these, the students would be leaving pretty much all their metal in a bin to go around the metal detector to be searched. But anything that comes through, it'd be easy to say like, oh, you've got something in your pocket or something in your pants pocket, rather than having to have them go through multiple times with no feedback. So these are a much lower cost, but they're the same type that you would see at a lot of stadiums and airports. These are the ones that they're currently using at Assembly Hall and they're able to get a large volume of people through quickly. The other kind of drawback to these is these will catch pretty much anything. So they would catch cell phones, anything like metal objects. So these will require some additional checking from staff at the metal detector screening area. So for that, the process again would be slightly different than what we've been doing at the high school, which is they have to get out their Chromebooks. And at this point, most of the high schoolers know what goes through and what doesn't. So they get out whatever doesn't go and kind of pass it to one of the SRSs around the metal detector where it's inspected. But most of their things, they can just keep on them and walk through the metal detector. So for the middle school, they would have to have pretty much everything, cell phones, keys, out of their things to be inspected by staff in kind of that pass around area and then collect their belongings on the other side. Here's a real quick kind of overview of what students could take through and can't take through. So small jewelry, small earrings and rings, belts with kind of smaller belt buckles are through, fine. Shoes are fine, even like if they have relatively small amounts of metal in them. And most watches that like, are like a, a normal, like smart watch would be fine as long as it doesn't have kind of a metal band. So things they would have to remove would be keys, phones, things with larger amounts of metal on them. It would pick that up. And I'm, I'm told many people don't have shirt pockets. All the middle schoolers aren't wearing the same shirt as me. But if they have things in their coats or other things, they would be able to find that as well. And I'll also talk about the vape sensors real quick that we've been kind of putting in the high school. I think, again, we had a presentation about this earlier on. Since then, we piloted two at the high school and had relatively-
Two at the middle, two at the middle school?
Two at the high school that we had positive success with. The high school asked for six more at the high school. And then we're piloting two at the middle school. The later version that we get detects vaping, smoking of regular nicotine or marijuana. As well as the new ones also kind of detect noises that sound like vandalism or fights or some keywords that sound like fights or there's problems going on in there. So we've been working with the staff at both buildings to kind of dial in the settings on those. And I feel like we're at a pretty good place with those right now. We're still working on the middle school to kind of get their settings dialed in. But that's the other thing that we're working on to kind of mitigate the, some of the increased marijuana and vaping use at the middle school.
So we, we recognize that putting vape sensors and doing some of this also needs to be coming, one, with information for parents. I think parents need to understand some of the implications for vaping and may not even realize that their students are vaping. And it's just gonna be a way, I think, to have some of those conversations with the middle schoolers, with their parents. So I've already reached out to a couple of people in our community who do some of these parent info night sessions. We'd like to bring someone in to talk to UMS parents about social media and all the things that students are doing with their phones related to purchasing drugs, buying drugs, just all of those things. There also is a person in our community who can provide information to parents about the, just, you know, what vaping means and what it's doing to their kids' bodies and their brains and their minds and their development. There are some upcoming events in the community that the ROE has shared with me that are going to be available this spring and we would definitely make sure that we invite UMS families to attend those. Unfortunately, I hate to say this, but we do have some students who are relying or vaping way more than they should be. And so at this point, we're going to be reaching out to Rosecrance or other groups in our community to provide some substance abuse supports for some of those students and their, and their families. And so I think the social workers and counselors, you know, we recognize who some of those students are and we want to do what we can to support them through, through this vaping and what they're doing right now and kind of work with them to provide just some substance abuse support. And I know that sounds really hard that we're talking about that with middle schoolers. This is typically something that we would be putting in place for a high school student. But unfortunately, it's a reality right now for some of our youth. Sure.
Why, I mean, everything is really good, thank you. Especially because I, I detect with my nose those smells and it's really bad. But there is a way that the district, as a district, gets on some areas where it's smoke free. Like we do when the tobacco, when the regular cigarettes, but for everything else, I have a perimeter around the schools.
We're supposed to be smoke free a hundred percent and our, even our staff members, we are a smoke free environment. So our staff are not even allowed to smoke on school property. So for staff members who still smoke, they have to leave our streets in our area. So this, so we're not allowing students to do this. They're sneaking and doing it and doing it in other ways. And so it is definitely not something that is permissible for adults or kids right now, so.
And what happened when you catch them?
So there are consequences that are being put in place. I think we're working with UMS to make those consequences a little more extreme is the word, maybe? And aggressive and severe, that's the word I was kind of looking for, is really just cracking down on it more. We're gonna talk about our discipline improvement plan next. So I think we have to be careful in terms of some of the, you know, we can't be as exclusionary as we would like to be in some instances because then, of course, that's not great either, right? If we're suspending and expelling students. But we definitely want to help them, especially our, our students that we know are struggling with nicotine and marijuana use right now. We more so want to help them instead of punishing them, but we definitely want to make sure that they understand you are no longer gonna be able to do this at UMS. So some supports for students, I think if we go to the next slide, John, is really educating them. I think while we also want to provide a lot of information for our parents, we want to make sure our students understand what all of this means. I mean, it might seem really cool or, you know, the peer pressure, I'm sure that goes along with some of this is a real thing. But I, we want to make sure our young people understand what vaping, nicotine, everyday nicotine use, weed is, is really doing to their development. And I don't know that they are getting that. So we're gonna work with, to create some brochures. IT's gonna put together a video. We had a great video that we put together when we started this process with metal detection at the high school. So they will at least understand, what does this mean? I gotta walk through this machine and how's it all gonna work? So we'll try to put some training videos together in the next few weeks for the teachers to start sharing during advisory. We also want to create some handouts about just the drug use and just really what some of this stuff means. We'll work with our social workers. We'll work with our social workers. The, each team has kind of like a team rec time, and so we want to maybe create some social stories or some activities that we, they can start sharing during advisory. So there can be open conversations happening. Because while we have taken the knives away from students, we know that there are probably students in the building that know that there are kids walking around with these knives. And we want to make sure that they feel empowered. And we have a system in place for students to report those things when they know about them. We also have provided additional threat assessment training in the last week or two once all of this was kind of coming, you know, out, that these things were happening. The special services department put together another opportunity for people to be trained so they understand what to look for and how to assess a threat. So we're doing some of those things at the middle school level as well. Lastly, I think the last kind of, John, if you go to the next slide. One of the additional layers of precaution that we really want to put in place, which is, we've done this at our middle school before, but it has been many, many, many years since we've been this strict in terms of bags and coats and book bags. So it's not unusual for middle schoolers in other districts, other communities, right here in our community where students are not allowed to walk around with their backpacks. We didn't do it for a long time at UMS. We started doing it in the last few years. And we are going back to a very strict, no backpacks walking around, no large puffy coats, and just no bags being carried around from class to class. That is a layer of precaution deterrent to just putting things in those bags that students aren't supposed to have. So starting in February, we're gonna, it's gonna take a little time to get the word out to students, to do some education with parents, and really talk about what people can have instead. And so on the next slide, there's a picture of kind of the, what we used to use. So for years, students carried kind of a zipper, trapper keeper style binder. This is very typical for middle school schoolers. This was a requirement at UMS for a long, long time and we kind of stopped doing it. And so we're gonna go back to a system where they can have a binder, kind of a trapper keeper. They're gonna be able to put all the things they need in there, but they will not, not be able to walk around with backpacks during the day anymore. We're gonna really try to work with some of our community partners, local businesses. These binders are not cheap, so we know that there's some families that will, it would be a hardship to provide one. So we're gonna try to, you know, work with churches or whoever we need to, to get as many of these donated as we can. So we have options for students whose parents are not able to provide, to go pick out some fancy binder that they would like. We'll have binders at the school that any student can have on a daily basis. And that's it, questions? So I know that was a lot. I think John has already done some pricing, already done some, you know, ordering, because we really want to get these in and get started as soon as we possibly can. I don't know if you've been following the news, but Unit Four has started their metal detection at, or they've been ordered and they're in.
They were supposed to start on Monday, so I assume they didn't start on Monday.
Probably not.
But probably tomorrow.
So I think there'll be a lot of lessons learned. John and I and Kim, we're supposed to go to the UMS staff meeting on Monday and we haven't had school, so we shared a document where we're trying to collect a little feedback from teachers. They're thinking of the same things that we're thinking of, right? Like, does that, does this mean kids are gonna be late to first hour? Are we gonna have to, you know, right now, no one uses their lockers because everyone walks around with their backpacks. So we're gonna have to do some education around using your locker and making sure that students can get from point A to point B and get the things that they need in between travel time and, you know, make some good decisions. So we're, so teachers are gonna have to be involved in that, team facilitators, you know, the, the teams are just gonna have to kind of help students navigate this process moving forward. But we really feel strongly about putting some of these measures in place will, I think, help us all feel a little more protected, a little safer. The building will be much more secure. Are we gonna be able to catch every single thing every day? Probably not. But at, at least we will be able to deter as much as we can. And that's really the purpose of the metal detectors, is a deterrent. So once students know this is happening and it is a reality in their world, hopefully we will have less and less of these situations where this is happening. I don't know, John, if you want to add anything else?
Yeah, and I think one of the big things is like, it's, we're gonna have a really good plan going in, but we're gonna also be a little flexible. And if it turns out we're not able to get as many kids through, we can look at some other ways to like randomize things. And if it turns out we need to kind of do some different things with the high school, middle school detectors, like those options are all on the table.
And we did a lot of that with UHS. Like, the plan we started off with is not what we do today. And so I think we just had to be very flexible there as well. Kim, you wanna add anything else? Okay. Questions?
How many staff would you need in order to be at each door for them to go through?
Yeah, so each detector, depending on how many people you want to get through. So usually one person to man the detector and you kind of have to like send people back through. And then if you're doing bag checks and kind of like personal effects checks on the side, it's probably two people per detector there. And then you'd probably, if you're gonna have three of them in a row at the front desk, you'd probably want at least the SRO and probably an administrator to kind of like oversee the operation. It's really similar to what we have at the high school where most of them, we have like on the order of four to six people on a given morning, kind of manning a couple, few detectors with those numbers of kids coming in.
And I think that's one of the biggest sharing concerns right now and questions that when we met with the threat assessment team, they're just thinking, logistically, how in the world are we gonna be do, able to do this, right? Like, get nine hundred students in the building, supervise in all the spaces where they're supposed to be, make sure they eat breakfast and get to everybody to first hour on time. And so I think that is, is, you know, we're gonna have to be a little flexible the first few days and everybody's just gonna have to pitch in and do their part. And then hopefully, things will kind of settle down, kind of like it did at UHS. But I'm hoping us getting into classrooms and talking to students about why we're doing this and the objective is to keep them safe will maybe help everybody be a little more patient and a little more understanding of the process going forward.
Yeah, and we're not just gonna set them up one day and say, you're on your own. There'll be some training for staff. The company that we bought them from has some training just built into the installation portion of it. And then we'll have some district support until we get like a good, solid system set up. And then once we do, we can start to gradually release that responsibility back to the buildings.
Just wondering if there was enough support staff in order to supervise this?
We mostly SRSs, but we'll work out a schedule with UMS with admin.
I was gonna ask, so when we were discussing before we approved the Open Gate at the high school, the part of the conversation was that the metal detectors would kind of randomly go to the middle school like once or twice a month to keep kids on edge. Like, maybe it's here today. Has that been happening and these knives are still going or?
No, well, we didn't realize we had a knife problem until recently, so we have not been taking them back and forth to the high school.
So I mean, it's never happened, even though that was part of the discussion before.
Nope, we did not do that.
Okay. And then another thing is, so it sounds like you've already purchased those other, the one on the right, when you have the two, Open Gate, and what the one on the right was called?
Uh, the purchase process is in, it's in process. It takes several weeks.
Yeah, but it's already happening, I guess is my question, right? So with that one, the first thing that comes to mind is, you know, if you're supposed to take all your metal items out and put it in a basket or something while you go through, I mean, what's to stop putting like a six inch knife in a metal Contigo water bottle? Cause I'm sure if you have nine hundred people, they're not gonna be unscrewing every single cap. They might the first week or two, but ultimately, it seems like there's so many ways you can sneak knives in still. So I'm not sure that's gonna stop anybody who really wants to get a knife in, but, you know.
Yeah, that'll be a consideration when we go through the training.
I just have to say, it's a sad day when we, when we have to even have a discussion about having to have metal detectors in the middle school and having kids that are vaping and smoking marijuana, even if it's not a huge group of students, any students is too much. And, you know, middle school is really a time for a lot of kids of, of trying things. It's kind of that coming into a little bit of age and they try our nerves, but they also try lots of other things, whether it's good things or things that are kind of more unfavorable or unacceptable, as in this case. You know, I think the important thing for us is that obviously we have to change with the times. And I think one of the issues that we see at the high school is that we're not addressing it at the middle school. We're not catching them early when they're first trying these things to, to, to actually say, this is unacceptable, this is not gonna happen, you know, here's some education about what it does to you in order to curb that behavior before they get to the high school. And I think they hit the high school and some of those behaviors start to get worse. You know, now you have a kid who, because we've not done as good of a job as we, we probably could have with being more aggressive, addressed a potential addiction issue that maybe didn't start as an addiction, but now it's a full blown addiction. Now we've, we've potentially lost that student because students who are addicted likely aren't performing well in class. They're probably have a higher chance, and I don't, I'm not quoting any statistics, but I'm willing to bet those are kids who are often dropping out of school too. So I think we do have to be aggressive in, in addressing, even trying to get to the root of the problem with some of these students, because that's what's really gonna help. It's not gonna be the, oh, you can't do this, you can't, 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 can't. But here is when you do this, here is what's happening and here is why you shouldn't do this. And, you know, here is why it's unacceptable. And I think as we do more of that educational piece, more of that hands-on piece, we might actually see some turnaround in those behaviors in the high school and it might contribute to student achievement, to dropout rates, you know? All of those things, I think all of this goes hand in hand. It's just really unfortunate that, you know, we're at this point of, of having to have this at the middle school. And Robbie's right, we're not gonna catch everything, but we know that. We, we don't catch everything at the high school either. You know, we, they don't catch everything at the airport, you know? They don't catch everything getting on an airplane. It's the reality. But if we could curb that behavior, especially if we can get quite a few of them curb, then that could be the difference between a potential pretty bad situation for us. Just one, turning one kid a different direction could be, you know, the difference between a kid being in the hospital because of a bad decision versus not. So while I don't like that, we have to support this. And we've already given the permission with the, the initial give, but I just wanna say that I'm happy we're having this discussion and that we are being transparent and saying, hey, we have now realized there's a problem. Hey, community, hey, hey, parents. It's not to cause a panic, cause, you know, I don't think any of this is brand new. I just think it's, it's getting worse because we're not addressing it a little more aggressively. So that, that's kind of where we're at. I'm a committee member, so, you know, I, I get to hear, you know, the staff and the teachers and the concerns and what they're seeing kind of more intimate basis. And I think this, this is a move in the right direction and to bring in community. I mean, we talk about better together, you know, we're, we're gonna be using those community resources. And these are people that are, that are passionate about this work. And that's why we bring in those people. We could easily say, hey, just put this in the health curriculum. But when you have somebody that has that passion, especially if they have a story to tell, because having stories to tell, kids relate a little bit better to that in a lot of cases. So I, I think it's, it's an unfortunate thing, but it's good that we are addressing it and not just continuing to, you know, maybe let things slide that we need to kind of catch early.
And I'm, I'm glad you're saying that. I know I was kind of hasty in my intro to get to the meat of the discussion, but I'm glad you're bringing that up, Tori, because I do want to say publicly to our teachers from UMS who are watching and, and, you know, folks who are thinking about this in terms of optics around, oh, my gosh, Urbana Middle School is not a place where I want to send my, my kid. I think you bring up a really good point. It isn't rampant. It isn't like every single kid. It, I mean, there are a few small instances or a, a finite group of students can make a big difference on a big group. And so whether, it doesn't matter if it's five kids or fifty kids, even one kid doing this is just not okay. And so I think that is where we are really trying to be aggressive. But you're right, it is, it makes me sad that we have to have this conversation, but again, I think it is, this is not a Urbana problem. This is a societal issue right now. I think all communities are dealing with something similar. Social media and the fact that our kids are so desensitized to so many different things is part of it at a much younger age. And so I think education is gonna be the key, you know, really talking to our students about what all these things mean, so.
I think it's important to say the majority of our students make good decisions every day.
Yep.
I mean, but, but even just one bad decision and following one person that's making a bad decision, I think we're gonna be able to curb some of that with, with this approach. So again, gotta change what we're doing, you know? And this is one of those changes that we, we have to talk about and we have to move forward with, so.
Anybody else? All right, all right, thank you for the report. Our last administrative report this evening is our ISB twenty-four, twenty-five discipline improvement plan.
Is Brandon in the power, is he in the? So Dr. Caffey is gonna share. I was gonna kind of wait till he pops in to make sure he can hear. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. So Dr. Caffey, in the interest of time, I know we have, we had to do this tonight, so I apologize to the board, it wasn't on our original board plan in terms of our, our topics, but this has to be approved by February first. So Dr. Caffey, if you could hit mainly the most important pieces, and the board members have this, so then they can ask questions if they need to. And I don't know that we need to walk through every single detail, but if you want to hit maybe the high points, and then if they have questions, they can reach out to you. Is that okay? Okay?
Yeah, absolutely. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So in the interest of time, what I would do is I will skip to section two, which is the next steps for the discipline improvement plan. This is where we do our data analysis and identify trends. And if you look at two thousand twenty-two, we had a total suspensions of nine hundred and four, and we are on the upswing unfortunately for two thousand twenty-three where we reported one thousand three hundred and seventeen suspensions. And so our suspension rank went from eighteen to eight, which again, I think is concerning for all invested parties in our school district is that, you know, for out of eight hundred and fifty-two school districts in Illinois, we remain in the top twenty percent for exclusionary practices. Also, if you go down to our racial disproportionality rate, we also remain in the top twenty percent statewide. While that number did improve somewhat from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three, we know that we are a minoritized school district and we still have disproportionality rate when it turn, when it comes to our exclusionary practices. So that is something that we need to continue to work on. Part three of the plan simply requires us to report if we are providing implicit bias training. We are in compliant with the state in terms of that. It is mandatory for all employees to go through implicit bias training through our Safe Schools Vector Training, as well as we've supplied professional development training with Dr. Dubiel and systemic equity. as well as we've um supplied professional development training with Dr. Dubiel and systemic uh equity to ensure that our our staff and employees are aware about the dangers of implicit bias. The meat of the plan uh really centers around uh section four, where we have to identify our various goals to try to reduce our exclusionary practices and our racial disproportionality. Uh again, for the interest of time, I will simply say that goals one, two, three, and four have essentially remained the same. We continue to uh center on our professional development in terms of um working with our team to make sure that everyone understands what our multi-tier systems of support look like, to make sure that all of our staff are trained in PBIS. But what we really are trying to make the shift is with our Equity Action Plan. And so we have added this component to the plan for this year. Uh we will be working in our planning sessions this summer for each strand of our Equity Action Plan to address uh discipline on some level. And so whether we're talking about professional development, whether we're talking about student voice, culture, and climate, every strand of our Equity Action Plan will address um our disproportionality rates as well as our exclusionary practices. And then if you go down to point six, again, we have some very intentional things that we're looking at. In terms of professional development, revisiting what the mandates are of Senate Bill one hundred. We are aware that we've had a high turnover rate, not only for teachers, but also for administrators. And we wanna make sure that everyone is up to date uh in terms of what those regulations and guidelines are. Uh we are in the process of developing a behavior metrics aligned to the SB one hundred guidelines so that we have some uniformity and consistency throughout our buildings. So that one, one particular location may not be given more days than another uh building for the same offense. Uh as well as we're continuing to look at uh our culturally responsive teaching strategies and pedagogies among our teaching staff um and investigating, and this is probably the most critical thing, uh investigating and implementing alternatives to suspension and expulsion. And so we're in the process of developing uh some different alternatives to suspension and expulsion. I know there was a comment just made um earlier in the in the in the evening about when students are caught with vapes, what can we do besides just suspending and expelling? Uh as in a situation where a kid may be addicted to nicotine or some other substance, it's more important that we treat the problem than just excluding students from school. And so uh this is the crux of the plan. Uh we will continue to meet uh on a regular basis to develop this plan. But this is what we're planning to submit to ISB with your approval. And so uh unless there's any questions, I will move that my report be accepted as read.
Thank you, Dr. Caffey. Are are there any questions for Dr. Caffey from the board? All right, now hearing on, uh thank you for putting this together on on short notice for us.
You're welcome.
Uh that completes our administrative reports. Thank you very much for waiting for our lone boat report from uh Jody Miller, Michelle Nelson, and Amy Byram for the Dyslexia Handbook and Toolkit. Really appreciate your patience.
Hello, welcome to our presentation. We have um, we are from different places. I'm a teacher with Urbana Schools, but I'm not here in that capacity. I'm not speaking for teachers when I'm here. Um I'm just speaking for myself as a parent of a dyslexic student and um someone who has researched educational practices related to dyslexia. Um so that's where I'm speaking from, just for prior knowledge.
Hi, everyone, I'm Michelle Nelson. I've worked with. Sorry, uh Michelle Nelson, I'm a parent. I've had um two children in the district and um both of them have dyslexia. I wish they would have had the screeners back then. I've come to have a lot of knowledge. I've worked with the district, uh Todd Taylor in the past, running a professional development program for teachers to raise awareness. I worked with the district on a dyslexia month uh where we brought in Dr. Dyslexia Dude to give a talk with the district. So um really here to raise awareness and figure out what we can do for the program. So thanks for listening tonight.
It's Arianna. Oh, hi, I'm uh Amy Byram and uh I'm a certified reading instructor. And I have about eighteen years' experience with working with the Orton Gillingham-based approach, um the reading, Wilson Reading System.
Um just one other thing, um we made this presentation in collaboration with Kellin Suraj, who is part of the SD, SLD SP Reading Content Specialist, who was one of the authors of the current ISB Dyslexia Handbook and Toolkit. And so she assisted us in um making this presentation. Tonight was unable to be here. So um I'll just get started. Um so just want to let everybody know, um dyslexia is probably not what you think it is. Um I was told back when I was taking courses for education that dyslexia is seeing things backwards. That dyslexia is reversing numerals when you write them. Um and that it's difficult to learn to read. Um but it's not, that's not really what it is. Dyslexia is a specific learning disability that takes place in the brain. It's a neurological disorder um and it's characterized with difficulties being fluent in anything related to language, which can be speaking, it can be reading, it can be writing, it can be processing mathematics. Um and these difficulties result from a deficit in the phonological component of your brain's ability to process language. And so it's usually not related to IQ. There are many brilliant people with dyslexia and so it doesn't necessarily go along with the capability to perform and in school in using your brain as far as cognitive understanding. So um it's it's not something that we can't manage. Um the reality is, is that it hasn't been managed in this country and in this school district and in this state because usually historically, the schools say that it's a medical problem. And the doctors say that it's a school problem and nobody has taken direct responsibility for treating the people affected with dys- with dyslexia. So we wanna make sure that the school and the board is aware of what it is and what we can do about it to make sure that we're reaching all of our students. So um the next slide is um it's estimated um that dyslexia is prevalent in fifteen to twenty percent of the population in some form or another. It goes from mild to severe, just as autism goes from mild to severe. So the capabilities of any individual student are based on what their brain is able to do in that moment and with the learning that they have. Um if you imagine a typical classroom in Urbana having approximately twenty five students, that would be about five kids in every room in our district have dyslexia of some form or another. Um and dyslexia is not just an English language problem. It happens in all languages, all cultures, all ethnic backgrounds, all income levels. And it is not a direct relation of how much a parent reads to their child. And that's often what teachers tell their students and their parents because they don't know better. And we're not, I'm not putting anyone under the bus because I've said it myself as an educator in the past. What it, what the problem is, is that we need to support parents and we need to support students in getting the help that they need so that they can actually learn to read and be proficient at reading instead of feeling like a failure when they are in school. So um it is inherited, so if a parent tells a teacher, I'm dyslexic, it's more likely that their child will also be dyslexic. So that's something just to keep in mind. So we have tiers of education, um which I'm sure a lot of you have heard about. Tier one education is what classroom teachers do with their twenty five to whatever number of students they have in their classroom all day, every day. Um tier two is usually a prevention strategy that interventionists work with students um on a regular basis, maybe twice a week or four times a week for fifteen, twenty minutes at a time to provide an extra boost to students. Tier three education is special services by specially trained staff. That usually is very um directed and the data is kept um so that we make sure we do what we need. So right now, we um wanna make sure that all of our students are screened early for dyslexia and that the tier one instruction is used as prevention, not as intervention. Um and that, just so you know, it takes four times as long if a student is identified in as a fourth grader to get them the help than it does if they are identified as a kindergartner. My child wasn't identified until the fourth grade by her speech and language pathologist from Urbana. And she's an amazing speech and language pathologist. And without her finding out that she might be dyslexic and then having to go, again, the medical versus educational, going outside and trying to find a place that would evaluate her, um she would be failing school. Right now, she's an honor student as an eleventh grader. So um every day, every educator needs to know what dyslexia is. The majority of us unfortunately do not. And so um I'm hoping that the district will put forth required um training for all staff so that all educators have the same background, that we use the new toolkit and the new um dyslexia handouts and things from ISB um to make sure that everyone is getting what they need.
So the district. The district does a good job with social and emotional learning, but it would be nice if we could build in the academics with it. So look at some of the underlying reasons that I think have been discussed before. And so without being flagged for dyslexia and people who don't get the tutoring that they need, they are less likely to complete high school. And so maybe some of the drop off data we heard earlier tonight in terms of enrollment, I'm not saying they all had dyslexia, but it would be interesting to look at the reading and literacy levels of the people that are leaving our schools. Um they are also less likely to go to college, college ready or career and college readiness. Um increased probability to enter the juvenile system or the prison system, right? If they drop out, they're more likely to have low self-esteem and mental health or other problems. Certainly, there have been vast studies where dyslexia has been associated with depression, anxiety, lower self-esteem. I have seen this in my own life and as a person who, or as an advocate in the local dyslexia groups, right? It is heartbreaking to see um what happens. Certainly, there are behavioral problems as um Dr. Sean Robinson went through his own personal journey and shows um behavioral problems with him. Rather than being looked at as stupid during read aloud in class or reading buddy in class, you're more likely to act out, drop out, roam the halls, right? And so a lot of these issues could be addressed, not only with the screening, which I'm really pleased we have, but with these interventions, right? The tier one, the tier two, the tier three, so we can catch the hundred and fifty four kids that were flagged last year with dyslexia. Certainly, there are strengths. Many people with dyslexia have said they can help think out of the box because their brains are wired differently. There are literally brain scans that show their brains are wired differently. And there's a certain kind of resilience that comes with it, with having to work harder than everybody else in the classroom, right? And so it's not all gloom and doom, but I think we can really address, it doesn't feel like a superpower if you're struggling reading. Um this, these, we've certainly seen a lot more current data tonight in terms of MAP scores and proficiency, really low scores across the board in the district. I heard earlier, if something's not working, we have to shake it up and do it differently. I'm pleased that they're gonna have some different kinds of literacy strategies, but this dyslexia should be part of that conversation, right? It's not just a special education issue. And so lastly, it is an equity issue. If you can't learn to read by third and fourth grade, you're gonna not do so well in any of your subjects, right? Because that's when a lot of, they call it the third and fourth grade slump because no longer are students, you know, they're they're not reading. So it affects everyone, you know, it affects all those kinds of learning and um can really have a long-term impact on academic achievement and mental health.
So um tools to address dyslexia, so. Um so I think I, what I wanna bring up first is um just that there have been really two main approaches um that have dominated that the, you know, reading uh in the educational sphere. Um one is the science of reading and the other is sort of the balanced literacy um field. And I I think that uh it's really important that we concentrate on the science of reading because the science of reading is incorporating all that phonemic awareness that kids need, all the phonics that kids really need, especially dyslexic students. So I think, you know, for a long time, we've concentrated on the whole word, whole um whole word approach and whole language approach and the balanced literacy. But what, you know, I'm really happy that the tide is finally shifting to, you know, focusing on what actually studies have been proving over and over are really helping kids uh to learn to read. So um here we have the. Oh, there we go. Oh, there you go. Okay. Okay, so um right, so so here on this slide, we have uh the the science of reading. So it's really important that we um, you know, choose a curriculum that incorporates that science of reading. It's so important because this is actually the evidence-based approach to getting our students read. Um and the teacher training is going to be especially important because, you know, a lot of, a lot of the teachers and a lot of the way we've we've been doing things forever um have been this whole language approach that has, you know, it's 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 been um discredited now, you know, that that whole approach. And but this is what a lot of teachers are already used to, it's what's comfortable, it's, you know, it's probably what they want to default to. And it's really important that we provide teachers with the supports they would need to actually start teaching in a way that's actually gonna help students. So um so not only is, you know, it's important to recognize the science of reading and also there are um for dyslexic students in particular, there are intensive programs that are um hugely successful. You know, they're sys- uh systematic and explicit and they really do work. So we've got teacher training.
If I click that really quick, the little URL for two, that that's part of, I don't know if it'll let me. Um yeah, that, the second one, not that one, the one below that one, I'm sorry. Um the the one, the first URL is just talking about RTI recommendations and how to manage that. Um there's one that's opening right now is um is about, from the Dyslexia Handbook that talks about, oh, that's the RTI one. Yeah, it's the other one, sorry. Um so this is from the Dyslexia Handbook about what tier two and tier three intervention programs um have been, not really approved by the state, but recommended by the state of Illinois as intervention programs that address the needs of dyslexic learners, but also other learners. Um and as we're talking about um adopting curriculum, I think it's important that we think about what the tier three curriculum is going to be and how that's going to help our students.
Can I ask you a question? Uh is okay to ask questions as you go? So um Jody, you know this and maybe you've shared it with Michelle and Amy. Is we are adding a tier three kind of intensive intervention position as part of the tier one um co-teaching model? So if if uh either of you or any, all three of you have utilized um some of those um actual interventions that popped up um that John had on the screen, that we, you know, if you know of schools that have used those or if you know of a specific success with one or a couple that we could look at, uh we are definitely looking at purchasing some curriculum, not just for progress monitoring. This would be more like a really intensive instruction um for our tier two, tier three students.
So the thing with tier three instruction in that way, those programs require very specific intensive training.
Mm-hmm.
Um and they require a certified person to do those training, to do those lessons. And so whoever that tier three interventionist is will need significant training in that in order to use the materials appropriately. And then the caseload will have to match the need of the building, obviously, but that's the main issue, so.
We're on board with that and that's why, that's why Beth Flat is here, just kind of listening too. So we, you know, wanna do some information gathering as we think about materials and training and PD and all that.
Um yeah, so uh the other, the other important thing is to um identify students early. Um because uh the early in intervention is tied to much higher academic scores overall. So it's really important that we um we do some screening. I guess I'll go to the next. Yeah, okay. Um so uh so first, you know, what's really important is is to have um a screening test early on. test early on. And that way, we're, we're picking up at-risk students and we can pick them up, um, quite early. And, um, like I said, it's super important because the earlier you start with a student, uh, the better the results will be. And I know that, you know, I've been doing this for years and years and I can tell you that if I'm starting with a kid who's in, you know, first grade, second grade, I am going to get them on track so much faster than if I'm starting with them at, you know, third or fourth or fifth grade. It's just, it's, it's, um, it's such a big difference because they're, they're really ready to learn at that, at that stage, early on, and it prevents them from getting really depressed and really defeated and, you know, then they're, they're on track with the rest of their, um, classmates. So, so we've got, we've got the screener, so we're gonna see who is, who is at risk and then, and then we need to have a diagnostic test. And that's just for some students, to see like, okay, these students that we've picked up may be at risk, we wanna look further, see what, what skills they have, where there might be deficits, and then we're gonna start to build groups for them, you know, to work in the classroom more, more intensively and hopefully start to bring in some of those explicit and, uh, systematic, um, uh, instruction to them. Um, and then, of course, there's, you know, we wanna do progress monitoring, you know, to see, you know, is the intervention working? And we might need, we might even need extra support, you know, so somebody to come in, you know, with, you know, certification, who has the knowledge to do that extra intensive, um, support.
Oh, sorry, you already did that. Yes, oh. So, one thing, um, with the Specific Learning Disability Support Project is they will offer free training to districts, they will offer free training to school buildings, they will offer free district, free training to small groups of t- teaching staff. Um, and so, that's something that we should, I think we should look into. Um, the other thing is, is that I just wanted to say thank you to the board and to the, um, administrators for using funds earlier, um, to provide letters training to staff. That was one of the best, from all the staff I've talked to that were able to take it, one of the best trainings that, and most helpful in order to be an educator, um, of a teacher of reading that has ever been offered. Um, and, you know, ideally, we would be able to offer that for all pre-K through two or three, yeah, as well as the sped staff. Um, I don't think we had a lot of classroom teachers that took it before, maybe a handful out of the numbers that took it, but if every, every elementary staff could take that, especially early grades, that would be great because dyslexia can be identified as early as kindergarten. So, um, we just wanna make sure that we get them that identification early. Um, these are the handbooks and the toolkit, the links are there, you can peruse them. They are very complete, there's videos embedded, there's sample lessons, sample charts, all the things embedded in there, and they are great. Um, so, um, I think that it would be wonderful if we could have intentional, regular, um, looks at those for staff development, just to make sure that we're not missing students. So, um, just wanted to, um, back it with a little bit of the law. So, um, any student at the bottom, I'm gonna start at the bottom first, in bold, um, each child suspected of having dyslexia or identified as dyslexic shall be referred for a special education evaluation in accordance with the requirements of the ideal law as part of the Administrative Code two-two-six. Um, and so, um, once students come up with dyslexia as a screener, um, you know, I think that it would be great if we had some sort of definite plan of the protocol and how that goes. Um, there's also just FYI kind of things on here. Um, we use the RTI and MTSS process in Urbana to talk about in small groups with our staff and our specialists, how to help students that have delays or disabilities. Um, we also need to fully understand that we can't use that to delay an initial evaluation for a student, that students that need to be evaluated need to be evaluated properly, um, and not wait for RTI data, that can be done concurrently. Um, and that, um, there was something, it's part of the State Board of Education in two thousand sixteen, requiring professional development and education for reading, teaching of reading and dyslexia and reading difficulties. So, just make sure that we continue working on those as a district. Um, and then, um, yeah, Amy, do you wanna do this one?
Sure, yeah, so, um, right, so dyslexia is not just a special education issue. Um, and, you know, students, they really do have the right to be educated with the best practices, you know, that is their right. And so, it's really important to be aware of like, making this shift to science of reading and this is what's evidence-based and this is gonna help dyslexic students. It also helps all learners, all learners do better when they're taught this way. And then, we also know what helps dyslexic students. We actually, we actually have the programs at work. It's, it's all, you know, I've, um, you know, I've been doing it for eighteen years and it always amazes me how using the right intervention really does take those kids to, um, you know, the full success and getting right back on grade level. Um, I think, like, like we said before, teacher training is especially important because this is a, this is a whole new field, there's a whole new direction, and it actually does take a lot of, um, training and, and a lot of work to get there. And, and we really do need to support the teachers because without that, it's, it's just really hard to be doing that on your own. So, we need to, we do need to have the right supports. Um, because, you know, everybody is comfortable with the old model, you know, so, but we don't wanna default to that because a lot of, you know, when we're looking at curriculums to buy, a lot of them will sort of let you pick and choose which direction you wanna go. And so, we need to make sure that we stay on, um, on that track of science of reading and not sort of go back to what we've been doing all along. Um, and, yeah, I think that's it. Yeah, thank you.
And then, the last thing is just on bottom of there, um, oops, uh. Um, that our teacher training, just, um, if we can really focus on making sure it aligns with the, um, International Dyslexia Association's recommendations and that as much as possible to allow our staff to have high-level training, um, such as the letters or Orton Gillingham programs or certifications that will allow especially our K-two teachers to get the students the help they need before they feel like failures. Um, my daughter, like I said, didn't get it till fourth grade. Um, I ended up pulling my daughter out of Urbana Middle School in sixth grade. She was only there two hours a day so that she could see Amy every morning at a cost to myself to make sure that she could read. And I was able to do that because I took her to the University of Illinois. I tried getting her into Carl, I tried getting her into her doctor, I tried getting her into all these places, but because my children are Medicaid, no one would take us. Medicaid is not, does not cover dyslexia assessments, it does not cover developmental screenings, and Carl does not take Medicaid for any of, like all kids Medicaid, for any of their diagnostic clinics. And so, our community is failing our students. And it's not Urbana schools, it's our community is not providing the services to our especially low-income students that need it the most. Um, so, we need to be proactive as a district and to help the students before that happens. And, you know, like she said, the, the mental health is huge. If you are, if you know you can't read when you're in second grade and then you're teased on the playground because you're not reading the same chapter book as other kids, and then you're excluded from everything, by the time you're in middle school, you don't wanna be there. And your behavior is going to be evident at the school, as we know, so. If there's any questions, please let us know.
And lastly, we have people like Amy in our community who are tutors, right? But it would be great if some of the interventions could be in the schools, right? Because not everybody can find or afford an Amy. Um, and so, I think if we want the literacy rates to improve and people to stay in school and the graduations to improve, rates to improve, um, the literacy people need to talk to the special education people, that you need to have a comprehensive plan for literacy that includes this piece, tier one, tier two, tier three, they need to talk to each other and to know what happens when the kids are flagged, right? Like, where do they go? How do we help them through this?
And I was actually, trained in New York City public schools, you know, that's how I got that, you know, certification. They actually put in the, the money and the time to let me go for a whole year to train, so, and it made an incredible difference in our school district in New York, so.
So, thank you, I know it's late. Appreciate you.
Well, it is, but this is really important, so thank you for bringing this to us. Uh, board members, administrators, any questions?
Yes, I do. First of all, thank you so much because I have dyslexia and I'm being badly like you did with your daughter. My son is in second grade and when I tried to address it with the teachers, she told me that it was normal for his age and also it was lack of exposure. Like, we only need to read more to our kids and I was like, she doesn't know what you're talking about because I detecting he's struggling like I struggle. And I'm struggling now, it's learning English, it's really hard. My son is learning Spanish, um, it's really hard. I totally with you. And actually, it's funny enough that today I was with my speak, um, coach and I was asking her for resources because I have trouble learning, I don't know where to go, and I have trouble teaching my son because I don't know where to go. I went to the pediatrician and I have Medicaid, nothing that covered. I went to the teacher and the teacher said, "Read more to your kids." Like, this is not a problem, that I'm reading to my kid every day since he was in my belly. But, um, so, yeah, thank you so much for your presentation, for being, for putting the public this awareness. Um, thank you for pointing out that it's no lack of exposure and they are no dummies. And I have a question, um, like how this works with like kids who are learning in Spanish because in our house, we speak English, my husband speak English. Um, I try to speak with him as much as I can in Spanish and he's in the galingo program, he's in second grade. So, how that works, uh, for that? And my other question is where we can find a screen? Because I asked in the school, they don't have, I asked in the car, they don't have. And there is any, uh, places where I can find resources for parents like me?
So, if, if a parent is, um, concerned about their child being dyslexic, they should bring it up to their school. And if they have significant concerns that last longer than a short amount of time, like for instance, I teach kindergarten and like I said, I'm not trying to speak as a teacher, but just as an example. If I have a student who comes in with no, zero letter knowledge, I'm not going to expect them to know all twenty-six letters in a month. But if, in general, the majority of the class knows all twenty-six letters by winter break and the student still knows two despite constant appropriate education, then I would be concerned and the parent would be as well. So, if a parent or a teacher is concerned at that point, they should bring their child up for, um, an evaluation through the school district so that we can find out what's going on with their learning disability. And it's, it's hard because there's a lot of hoops to jump. Um, I had to jump them as a master's degree educated parent in education. Um, and, you know, I wasn't able to get dyslexia on my own child's IP despite her diagnosis by the University of Illinois until, in fourth grade, until she was entering the sixth grade. Um, and it took a very long time. And, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of very tight regulations about certain things in the special ed law, but there are also a lot of protections for parents and students in the special ed law. And so, it's, it's very difficult to manage that as a parent. And so, special ed advocates can really help. Um, as far as speaking another language, speaking another language is extremely difficult for children who are dyslexic because dyslexic children have to learn each individual rule, like, you know, words in English don't end in V. So, the word have has an E at the end, even though the rule is if there's an E at the end, it makes a long vowel sound, it doesn't in the word have because words in English don't end in V. Now, if you have to learn all those rules for English and then all those rules for Spanish or any other language, it makes it twice as much work. And so, that's a big struggle. And my daughter didn't wanna take a foreign language all through middle school and high school because it was so hard. And so, right now, she's getting special permission and in her own time in the evenings, after she spends a lot of time on her homework because it's hard, um, to do dyslexic homework, um, she is choosing to take American Sign Language because that is a foreign language that she can get on her college transcripts so that she can get accepted into competitive universities. So, we, I think we have to also think about those kinds of things, like what are we offering to our students to make sure that they are competitive in the workforce and at university acceptance too? But I, I, I don't know how to help, uh, other than get the advocates on your side, know what your rights are and ask for them because that's what we all need to do as parents for our kids.
Anyone else?
So, uh, uh, there was a slide that you had about, uh, screening. Uh, there is this thing called a MAP dyslexia screener, uh, that you said that our district uses. So, is that, uh, I guess first off, is that something that's only applied to students where there's a notice that, there's suspicion either from the teacher or the parent that there's some trouble? Uh, or is it given to everybody? And then, if somebody's identified by that screener, what then happens to them? You know, do they, is there a, I mean, that's, maybe that's a question for Beth Latt or Kim Norton or somebody, but what their next steps are after that?
No, it's given to all students, so, and sometimes in kindergarten, for example, you may have some, some false results at first, so then you continue to monitor, look for other signs, then it may be given again, or you have problem-solving meetings, but no, it's not a, a sampling or, you know, because there are some developmental things too, but it's always given to all.
So, if you're in second grade, you may have gotten it three times, like once per year or just like once?
Usually not, I mean, kindergarten, you know, you, you would do it perhaps, but it's then not done every year if there's not any, um, warning signs. But initially, yeah, it's given to all.
Robbie, were you asking if, if a kindergartner is flagged in the fall and then in the spring and then they're flagged again in first grade in the fall and then the spring? Is that what you're asking?
Well, first I was asking who all gets this, you know, and then, you know, it might be that somebody looks like they're okay in kindergarten because they've had a lot of preschool coming in so they know all the letters, for example, but then it comes out in second grade that they actually don't read very well. And then, do, would they get screened then or they pass kindergarten so we don't screen them anymore? And then, the second part is, when somebody is identified, what do we do for them? Is there a protocol in place, like those state laws are implying we should have?
Right, I think that, like I said, if initially there's interventions that you put in place and then you have to give that time, and so, we talk about research-based interventions. And so, we give six weeks to try that, see if we're seeing any differences, um, and, and continue to monitor. And then, if necessary, then we have a referral process as well.
Just not waiting for them was for you guys. So, what I can do, because I already addressed it with the teacher, I'm dyslexic, dyslexic, this is genetic. My son, I can detect and I can see my son's frustration. I don't have the tools to help him. I went to the teacher in second grade and she said that was because of lack of exposure and I should just be reading more to him. I'm gonna go back to her for the next teacher-parents conference and I'm gonna ask her again, but what, what I can do, who can help me to screen my kids? Because I asked the doctor, they don't do it. No, your credentials, so please leave me your credentials at the end, so, see, I can afford you, but if you guys can help in that, I mean, what they are asking is for the district. So, it's me, who, what I can do.
So, if you've talked to the teacher, I mean, we have an MTSS multi-tiered system of support process, so, I mean, you should be able to request an individual problem-solving meeting to talk about all those things, right? Like, you know, what was my son's screening results and what interventions have been used and what are some of the things that have been tried in the classroom or, um, has he been progress monitored by someone? I think it's really hard when, I think he's, he's English dominant or, no, Spanish. Yeah, so I think language is always hard. I think, you know, I'm looking at Beth because we have that conversation, like, you know, we used to have it at King every single, you know, when we had students that had, um, a second language and then, um, we're also having, uh, reading or, um, language development issues, you know, the bilingual folks and the ESL people are saying, "It's language, it's language." And then the teacher's saying, "No, they have special needs, it's, it's this." And so, I think it is, um, it is hard when they're in kindergarten, first and second grade to determine which, which is it, which came first, the chicken or the egg, right? Is it a language issue or is it a, um, a learning, a develop, learning disability issue? So, I think at this point, if he's in second grade, then it is time to start kinda going back and saying, "I need to have more information." So, I think at this point, if he's in second grade, then it is time to start kind of going back and saying, I need to have more information because it isn't just language or it isn't just this. So, yeah, we have an individual problem solving process. Our parents can request meetings as well. Like, you can say, I would like to have a meeting with the team to talk about this. And at that point, I think they're- Yeah.
It was a supplemental slide at the end that we did not present this one, but it was in the packet. But there are, there are very common signs of children with dyslexia. And regardless of what language they speak, they will likely have at least half of these things. Even as young as age three or four. And so, um, so if, if a parent sees that, it may be, you know, very important to ask for those meetings immediately or as soon as possible. And if they have all of them or some, you know, other major concerns, like you have a parent with the dis, with the disability or you have other issues, um, that you're very concerned about, then you can ask for an evaluation if you have evidence.
You really can tell right away if someone has dyslexia. It's pretty easy to determine and you can determine it very early. I just think that's why there needs to be more people like me actually in the schools. You know, I, I loved being a reading specialist in New York because they gave me that training. And I was really able to, you know, get those students in intensive learning who needed it. And, you know, I just feel a lot of teachers don't, don't know. So, like, probably the teacher you're working with, you know, is just hasn't had the training, hasn't had the support, probably doesn't know, sees a lot of kids coming through, you know, who have the same deficits and just, you know, hasn't been trained to recognize it and, or know what to do about it. And that's why we need to like, you know, really, really get this going, really get into the schools, you know? People who know what's happening and know, know how to immediately address it and form these groups where we can really teach kids how to read.
Like, I was detecting my son struggling and that was her answer. So, I didn't have the information what to do. So, I think it's important for the teachers to know also how to redirect the parents.
And like an awareness campaign for parents too, right? So, if the MAP tests flags the child, does the parent get alerted? Right? Like, at what point would the, did your ch, child get flagged? Right? Like, I don't know if it's a communication thing or what, right? So, if teachers and parents are all aware of these signs and then know what to do, like, if school board, you know?
I just wanted to say, like, as a parent, I didn't know any of these signs. And as a teacher with a master's degree, I didn't know any of these signs. I was never taught these in my undergrad at Michigan State. I was never taught these in my master's program at the University of Illinois. And many of our staff go to the University of Illinois and it may not be taught there. And so, we may need to do that teaching with our staff here.
So, uh, my, my other question is, um, you know, it seems kind of logical to me that, uh, if you identify somebody with dyslexia, that, uh, it's easy for like our prior program of having reading interventionists take them out and focus on them, train them how to read better, and then put them back in the classroom. I can follow that. But, uh, with this co-teaching model, um, and that tier-one setting, um, you know, unless everybody in the class has dyslexia, I mean, what I'm asking about is if you, how do you bring dyslexia-specific instructions into that main classroom? Or is that done with this tier-three person? You know, I don't know. Is that tier-three person the person that spearheads that now for the future or? Maybe that's not a question for Amy.
I'm not a policymaker and I'm not in charge of any decisions in this district. Just want to make that clear.
His question about the universal, yeah.
Oh, the universal screening? Okay. I was like, I don't know, that's not my pay scale.
I was looking at you guys to, for the tier-one conversa, yeah.
Oh, well, I mean, as, um, a tier-one classroom teachers, you know, we generally do, uh, a curriculum for the main populace of the classroom, right? So, um, trying to make sure everyone has the same foundations. Kids that need a different foundation or a different way of going about their foundation need different things. And so, how that will look with the new literacy plan, I don't know.
And I think the key is what Amy's been talking about, that we are shifting to more of a science of reading model. Because we are going to be adopting a new tier-one curriculum. Right now, I think Jody is a very skilled educator, but not all of our teachers, new teachers, long-term subs are. So, we probably are missing a lot. But moving forward, the fact that everyone will have a curriculum, um, that will, because it is foundational and it, it is built around the science of reading principles, I think we will have more of an opportunity to be able to see where is, our kids are struggling with decoding, where are they struggling with their phonemic and phonics and all those things that are on this list. Like, a lot of these things that you have right here are very phonics and phonemic awareness related. And right now, our curriculum, we don't have a curriculum that is doing that. And so, um, the nice thing about having something that everyone have, that is consistent, when you see an anomaly, right, things will hopefully stand out to people. So, that will be something new. And then to answer the second part of Robbie's question is, yes, we are gonna have a ti, an intervention person who will then be the person doing some of that progress monitoring, um, doing some of that pull-out with a very specific cur, not the same tier-one curriculum, but something more intensive, which, like, some of the examples that you share.
So, somebody will be, so somebody who is trained and certified will be pulling out groups of kids?
I don't know if they'll have as much experience as you, Amy. And trained in Orton-Gillingham and all those wonderful things. But I think, uh, yes, so we're, we have a lot of our folks who went through the letters training. We have people who have had some of those, um, more intensive intervention, uh, literacy trainings over the years who are applying for those positions. So, um, hopefully those will be the people who then would be doing that pull-out and working with those students on a more intensive level.
I'm sorry, do you know how many tier-three interventionists per building there will be? Because if there's, on average, five per classroom and there's ten classrooms, that's fifty kids. And if the intervention needs to be done on a daily basis, one intervention says wouldn't be able to pull fifty kids a day.
That's true. Like, I can only work with like five or six students at a time. It's like, it's been pretty limited, so.
So, I think it'll look a little bit more like what our traditional Title I teachers did in the past. And right now, we have three to five positions posted. And so, we'll, we're gonna kind of wait and see where all the kids land for redistricting before we decide if we're putting full-time people here or, you know, if we have a smaller building, if they're gonna need a person all day. So, I think we're gonna kind of wait and see. But we have people applying, so that's exciting, that we have people who are interested and want to do that.
So, I was just try, try, so to be clear, there's right now slotted to be one tier-three interventionist per building?
Probably one per building, but we're kind of waiting to see where all the kiddos land and shake out.
But, like, on average, there would be fifty to seventy dyslexic students per building that may need specific intervention? So, I was just trying to make the math work there, sorry.
Yeah. Well, we have some of our, our resource folks too, so I think it'll be a team approach. You know, it may not be one person doing it, so.
Anyone else? Thank you guys so much for-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we do have, uh, action items tonight, starting off with our consent agenda, um, including twelve dot one, our minutes from our December nineteenth business meeting, our January fourth District Facilities Property Committee meeting, and our January ninth study session. Uh, twelve dot two are our December bills and checks, which were given advance approval on January ninth. Ed fund bills, uh, for nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. O and M fund bills for two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. Bond and interest fund bills for one hundred and sixty dollars. Transportation fund bills for two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, working cash bonds for a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. School facility occupancy tax for three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Tort for sixty-nine thousand dollars. Payroll, salary, and benefits for, uh, seven, uh, million dollars. And Urbana adult education, uh, from October through December for two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Uh, we had, uh, various personnel items, uh, in our packet along with, uh, twelve dot four, two administrative personnel items. Uh, twelve dot five is a resolution authorizing and directing the sale or disposal of personal property. There was a lot of, uh, weeding logs, uh, from, from libraries. Uh, twelve dot six is the, uh, ISB Discipline Improvement Plan, uh, which Dr. Caffrey presented to us earlier this evening. Uh, that's, uh, the entirety of our consent agenda. Does anybody wish to have any particular item removed from the consent agenda? Uh, hearing none, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Staton?
Yes.
Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. And our individual action items start off with gifts. A donation of five hundred and ninety-five dollars from global charitable funds was received for the UHS Boys Tennis Program. Scott and Angela Carr and Bruce and Mary Elliott Litchfield both donated five hundred dollars to the UHS Boys Basketball Program. Susan Heinrichs donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the Urbana UHS Orchestra Program. And Sarah Benjamin Bryant donated a Franz Hoffman for, uh, for cello to the Evelyn Burnett Underwood Music Assistance Program. Is there a motion to receive the gifts and send out thank yous to the donors?
Second.
So, moved and seconded. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, thirteen dot two is a res, resolution abiding the tax heretofore levied for the year 2023 to pay debt service on taxable general obligation bonds. Alternative Revenue Source Series 2010 of School District Number One Sixteen, Champaign County. Uh, is there a motion to accept this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Tori and seconded by Ben. And I guess we can, Katie has, uh, something she sent in to us to provide context for the board.
Yep. And so, this is a pretty routine, um, you know, kind of something we do all the time. So, um, presented for the board's approval, um, for a baitment resolution for Series Two Ten and Two Twenty-One C, um, Alternative Revenue Source Bonds. This is an ordinary action that the board must take every year as part of our, our normal tax levy process for the duration of the bonds. Um, these resolutions instruct the county clerk to abate the property taxes that would otherwise be lev, levied in the coming year for the purpose of paying debt service on these bonds. The action upholds our commitment to taxpayers that these scheduled principal and interest payments will not be levied on property tax bills and will instead be paid for facility sales tax funding. Um, if we don't approve this action and actually, um, instruct the county clerk to do it, he, it just, it doesn't happen. So, the board has to vote. We have to approve it. We have to share the date that it was approved, um, in order for the county clerk to start that process to abate the property taxes for the coming year.
All right. Thank you for the context. Uh, this is for debt that we started in 2010.
In 2021.
Sorry.
Yep, both of them.
Twenty twenty-one.
Yep.
Uh, any further comments or discussion? Uh, roll call, please.
Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Staton? Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. Uh, so instead of 2010, we have another, another resolution for our 2021 debt. In action item thirteen dot three, resolution abiding the tax heretofore levied for the year 2023 to pay debt service for general obligation bonds, uh, Series Twenty Twenty-One C. Is there a motion to approve that payment?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Staton? Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Member Baxley?
Yes.
Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. Uh, thirteen dot four is approval of the updated and revised, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, which we discussed at our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the updated and revised calendar?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments or discussion? I'm not sure if this requires roll call or not, so let's do a roll call.
Okay. Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Staton?
Yes.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Uh, Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. And, uh, our last action on this evening is, uh, thirteen dot five, the Press Plus Number One Thirteen Packet, which we discussed at length at our last meeting. Is there a motion to approve the policy changes?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further comments, discussion? This definitely takes a roll call.
Member Baxley?
Yes.
Member Langendorf, yes. Member Hassanaka?
Yes.
Member Staton?
Yes.
Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palowski?
Yes. Uh, there is a future execu, session scheduled for Thursday evening for the purpose of student discipline. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Don, you got it? All right. So, UHS, well, I am on, UHS Winter Guard is headed to state. They're, they always do such a fabulous job, so. Um, state finals are February tenth in Springfield. Um, we have Morgan Perez's solo qu, uh, flag routine qualified, as well as some of the team lyrical flag routines, uh, also qualified. So, congratulations, um, to Winter Guard. Cheer Team this weekend placed fourth in the Carterville Cheer Invitational. So, that is Ms. McMahon, the sponsor from UHS and the cheer team. So, congrats to them. Super excited. Um, Sunday, this coming Sunday is our annual Black History Month celebration, where we kind of kick off the month in honor of, uh, the life and legacy of Janice Mitchell. Um, this has been done the last three years and, um, we're doing it at Dr. Williams Elementary from three to five. All are welcome. Um, there is a small program, activities, performances, and a book giveaway. So, this has continued to grow. The first year, we just kind of released balloons and said a few words and, um, every year, um, it becomes more and more involved and more and more, um, just a great time and great fun. So, join us, uh, Sunday at three. A reminder, um, if you have not been receiving texts and you've not been getting phone calls from the district, that means we do not have your information, um, for all of the e-learning and, uh, winter weather events that have been happening. So, um, if you haven't signed up for whatever reason, um, please do so. Go in and sign up for text alerts and, um, also check your information in Skyward so you are getting all the info about, um, school closings as well as announcements and upcoming. There's gonna be a lot of, um, information and communication this spring coming from the district and we don't want people to miss out on it. So, please sign up if you haven't already. And, uh, February thirteenth, EPW Family Ca, um, and Community Cafe. No school on the nineteenth. Uh, we have Winter Institute on Friday, the fifteenth. Um, and then I got my signup email today for Read Across America on March second, um, at Lincoln Square. So, if you got your signup, sign up so you can represent Urbana at the, um, Read Across America Day. I'm sure that's gonna be in Sherry's board report.
Uh, we do have one FOIA request that was completed from Tom Schroder. For any records that were responsive to my December eleventh request criteria but weren't provided. Additionally, I am requesting any newer records that match the same criteria. Board report. So, I'd like to start off, uh, Tori with regards to, uh, an update on where we are with the superintendent evaluation process.
Those are going out in the morning or maybe tonight?
It's up to you.
Okay. So, those will be going out, um-
So, for these, the, the direct reports for the superintendent, is that, collecting that data?
Yep.
So, we're gonna need to schedule an exec session, hopefully, before the- So we're gonna need to schedule an exec session, hopefully before the end of February to make sure we're compliant with our contractual obligation.
Yep.
Did you want the direct reports first and then the board survey? Or did you want them just both at the same time?
I really want the directs first, so if we can get that out right away.
So we could do one week and then another week? Sure, we can make that happen.
Yeah, great. We talked before.
All right, I appreciate it.
Getting the deadline together.
Okay, well, I guess probably within a couple of weeks we can decide, we can try to pin down a date for the, for the actual evaluation then.
Yeah.
Great. Um, any other board reports?
In my mind, I just want to say that I'm glad everyone was safe yesterday and I know that it was a hard decision to decide. And I know many years as a parent and as a teacher, that we thought we were gonna get eight inches of snow and uh snow came, school was canceled and then low behold, we got maybe one inch and, because it went to Bloomington. So I know how difficult that decision is, but thank, glad everybody was safe because it was pretty treacherous yesterday.
Yeah, it was. It was.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? The chair entertaining a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks. We'll see you all in two weeks, except for those of you who will see you Thursday night.
Thursday night, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm good. Do they need to be on green too or just on?
Recycle it all for you.